There we go. But I'm not doing this part, you're doing this part.
While we do the, do we do the silly first, we make a statement, only make a statement.
Make a statement first.
Okay, let me make the statement here. This is a special meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Public Meetings Act. Notice of the schedule and the agenda, to the extent known, was sent to the Asprey Park Press in a few weeks' time. That notice was also posted on bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted, at least in advance of forty-eight hours of this meeting. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public, as have requested such information in accordance with statute. Adequate notice having been given, the Board Secretary is direct to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants or experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. The floor is a separate and independent municipal legal entity, and its limited authority is specifically set forth in borough ordinances in the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It's quasi-judicial in nature and the members of the Board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and council. The zoning Board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations, the Borough Council does that. The zoning Board does not enforce the land use laws of the borough Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of their authority and full team officer. This Board deals with the appeals for relief and our requirements of the boroughs' land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria, a reply by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain requirements of proof. The Board has no authority to waive these requirements. The broken proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled specifically to request it. The applicant must prove that deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance, and that deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zone claims. Variants is related to future use of the land are not intended or authorized to run in temporary or personal situations, will call pre-sure.
Question.
Here.
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 Mr. Vine.
Here.
Mr. Porter Vine.
Here. 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 Do you join the question, fight?
Fight allegiance.
Fight. United States. And you live in a court of law, of course, ten, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds at all.
Okay, it's Ryan.
Excuse me myself, without anything back.
Thank you. First matter on the agenda is the MAD five fifty River Road. Doug, you're gonna kind of lay out where we are on this before we start.
Let me swear witnesses, art exhibits, and then give a persuasive statement. Anybody who's gonna testify, I think they're gonna testify, gonna say something, they're asking to stand, my planner and engineer, please. So, that's what I do before the door, see the truth, all through talking about the truth.
I do.
My usual counsel. Before you start testifying, can state your names, spell your name for the record, so that we have identification, or they can provide to our recording device and keep there in case we have the need. With regard to exhibits, I have, just our prior exhibits, exhibits A one to A twenty, exhibit ZB one to ZB six, and we had one objector exhibit Rosowski. So it's marked as a Rosowski one. New exhibits, from what I see, are going to be marked A twenty-one. It's the, we have the prior resolution of approval marked as A twenty-one. That is a resolution entitled granting approval with variants will need to properly locate in that five fifty River Road, property, item, Fairhaven. A keynote that I think that the resolution that we received is missing a couple of pages that we thought of, I think we missed two pages. I think we can take care of it. A twenty-two. These are the revised architectures, four pages. Revised as of May sixth, Anderson Campanella. A twenty-three, these are the revised engineerings, eight sheets, by Insight, revised to May three. A twenty-four, email from the applicant's counsel, who need the copies of resolutions, permits, previously granted and or denied to the site and or withdrawn, I'm not going to burden that upon you through all of those. It's filled sufficient pocket. Basically, it's a response that we charged the applicant's counsel to provide us all that material, we don't have that. A twenty-five is the applicant engineer's writing, over the signature of Jason Fitcher. May sixth, twenty twenty-four, basically providing status of different things that they have done with regard to responses to the engineers request. ZB seven is CCH planning review from Michael Sullivan, Don Miller, Kristen Harrison. May three, twenty twenty-four. ZB eight is CM engineering review, number four, with the signature of Jason Wizzo, that's as of April eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Those are all the additional exhibits I have at this point in time, anything else to mark?
We have a couple to mark from Mr. Anderson.
Just one, A is, wait, it'd be A twenty-six, or A?
A twenty-six at this point in time.
Okay. It is labeled ZM one, one, zero, and it is a, a floor plan with the picture of building mounted lights to be removed and or removed. So it's extracted from the other floor plans in relation to the letters that we have.
Floor plan, lighting, yeah, okay, and what is the date of that today?
I believe it's today.
Tonight?
Yes.
May sixteen. Let me, one other thing, I'm trying to get out of the way of this, just by way of, setting course on the record, this is not a new application, this is a continuation of an application. We recall that in the past, even though we've done memorializations, this hearing for this started back on, on December seventh, twenty twenty-three. It's continued with consent to February first, twenty twenty-four, at the February first meeting, council requested permission to bifurcate. That was granted by the Board, we prepared a resolution based upon that bifurcation, and that memorialization occurred on April eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Substantially, this is why, often, two halves to an application. In this instance, the first half, the two resolve, is the D variance, the non-conforming reuse, if you will. I commend the applicant for requesting bifurcation, because if you weren't ever going to allow the use to be there, why burden the entire evening with cycling and use? Now, so the use is now, we're gonna say, yes, it's permitted, now we're getting into the cycling aspects of it, okay? This is the second half, it's the cycling, it's the stuff that, while you have some experience with it, this is usually a planning board issue when you get into the details. You literally get into the weeds of the, burn, the buffers, setbacks, lighting, planting. So we're gonna be relying heavily this evening, although we have both our pay houses here, we'll probably be relying heavily, and going through reports of CCH, that's the ZB seven document. But again, I want to make it clear that our burden here, I think you're probably gonna hear, hearing things, you're not gonna be hearing about D variances, you're gonna hear a reference to a non-conforming use occasion. But what you're really gonna be doing is either C one or C two relief by way of the bulk of funds that they need. Again, you're probably gonna hear some testimony about why my hardship, because there's a pre-existing structure there, regularly shot and shaved a lot, so to speak, but you're gonna be hearing more about planning and cycling than you normally hear as your board. But since the D variance, as they say, carries the day here, that D variance brings the entire application before you. Any questions about where you're going this evening?
I have a question. So, Mr. Anderson, please feel free to jump in. When we were here last time, my mindset is focusing on the idea that we have an existing structure, we have an existing approval back from the late sixties, and we address the issues effectively of a change in use in relation to that existing structure that was previously approved. The materials in front of us are detailed, and there's a lot of questions with regard to traditional site plan review. What I'd like to understand, to the extent that it's as simple as getting it clear upfront, is whether or not we're building off the existing approval insofar as we're gonna be in compliance with that existing approval, and we're looking perhaps to make modifications that will be reviewed? Or are we looking effectively to start over again, where we're not gonna be bound by that resolution, and we're gonna be evaluating it, you know, I guess somewhat from scratch?
I think we're building on the sixty-eight resolution, so what we're trying to do is to improve the conditions that exist or that have been modified to a degree de facto, not de jure, in the last fifty-six years, I think someone calculated it the last year in February. And so you'll, the testimony you hear predominantly from Mr. Fitcher, as the planner and engineer, relates to those site details that typically, as you, as you said, or as council said, the planning board hears. But tonight, you'll be sitting in that function with regards to the site plan details, and the typical bulk variances that you're accustomed to in your, in your role as the zoning board members, the C one and C two criteria. So, sorry, so what we're trying to do is reconcile what's happened in these fifty-six years since the nineteen sixty-eight approval. Improve it to a degree, package it, and have you approve it, rather than just say, well, we'll just live with what happened in nineteen sixty-eight as the site exists now, that's really not what we'd like to do. Okay, so based upon all the plans that you've heard, that's where we'd like to go, to improve on the sixty-eight resolution.
So to the extent.
And, and I'm so sorry. And there've been a couple of intervening, right, there was the ninety-five resolution, and I think the zoning interpretation with regard to the sign. So, so, but principally, the site plan, if you will, was approved in sixty-eight.
Okay.
Pardon me, thank you.
So to the extent we're talking about landscaping or lighting, we're talking about it today, that's gonna trump whatever's in the sixty-eight resolution.
Correct.
But to the extent that someone's concerned about drainage or the parking lot, that's really addressed in sixty-eight. And so to the extent we don't talk about a change to that tonight, the understanding would be that we'd stay in compliance with what it said in sixty-eight.
Correct.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Right.
I think you're done, right, Doug?
I'm done, except just only to say one thing, while all saying, except, with regard to the standards, I think your planner has laid them out fairly straightforward, succinctly in section nine, where it talks about consideration of variances and exceptions, I won't burden or recommend that. Pages fourteen of seventeen and fifteen of seventeen outline those balances that you take with regard to the variance, with regard to C one and C two. I think you may still have one D variance, is there still a height accessory by call, is there still?
Well, I don't, I don't think there would be a D for any.
Shouldn't be a D for an accessory.
For any accessory, right, so, so to my knowledge, no D variances whatsoever.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
And I, and I would also add, again, I emphasize this, what we're trying to, so for example, right, the sign that was approved, we established the sign, the monument sign, twelve feet high was approved. But we're trying to improve on that by dropping the mass and dropping the size from twelve feet to roughly seven feet, and having only twenty feet of square footage for that sign compared to what was previously approved. So we'd like for that to be something that you approve, rather than everybody stuck with a sign that really nobody, including the applicant, wants. But yet, that's what was approved, that's what we have, okay, that's, that's one example of what we're, why we're trying to get this site plan approved this evening.
Okay.
Terrific, so with that, applicant calls James Anderson. He previously was acknowledged as an expert chairman with regards to his testimony as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Absolutely terrific.
Okay.
Still an expert.
Terrific, great. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening.
I'm wondering if you can tell the Board with regard to what's been identified as A twenty-six, what we've got going on there in the second floor?
I, I, certainly, well, A twenty-six is the first floor. I'll find my way back to that, that's primarily relating to the lighting questions that came back with the ready-to-review letters we got. So, if I, I'll just start with the second floor, which is actually another, the second floor plan. There was comments here at the last meeting, I wanted to direct to a moment, and then to, the two review letters. Regarding our last meeting, one of the comments was, there was discussion about what was going on on the second floor, how many tenants and so forth. And at the end of it, the, the idea was that it was gonna be restricted to a single tenant, and that there would be no partitions or ability to cut up that space. Those notes were put on to ZN one of two that was recently submitted and it's doubled and pointed out. Something that we didn't talk about, but since I believe the applicant themselves are gonna use this as opposed to renting it out, which was an earlier lot. I believe rather than building the new bathroom, which would push into the mechanical space, they're, they're going to leave the existing bathroom on the southern, on that floor, so. That was one of the comments from the last meeting, that, that is about the restriction of, don't, no addition at all to the partitions. And then there was another thought that was brought up during the meeting, and that was related to the vestibule on the front, and the fact that there was going to be like a receptionist there and those sorts of things, and not looking in and seeing feet, wires, you know, that kind of stuff. So, we put notes on two oh one up here that requires screening to be in that lower panel to obscure that. That means saying, hey, we're still trying to figure out what is the best way to do it, we thought we would do it later in the construction, and either use film over that, paint, or possibly even fabric. I mean, we wanted to obscure it, but we also want it to look nice, and I think that being able to actually install it there and take a look at it in the real, setting, if we can leave us that attitude that it needs to be screened, but see what would look the best in those little panels here across the front of the building.
Referring now to which exhibit?
ZM two oh one.
Thank you.
I think that is part of A twenty-two.
Yeah, it's part of A twenty-two, yes.
Thank you.
And then in terms of the compliance letters, there was two different ones from CM, the associates, one from Clark, and one in April, and the other in the beginning of May. In the prior one, there we had shown the height of the building differently than the engineers. We've taken off the architectural drawings that were done in sixty-eight, and they measured it. So we changed our measurements to coincide with theirs, I guess it went from, we had twenty-three point five feet, and it moved down to twenty-two point five nine. Really no change considering this is a building, but I think they just wanted the consistency of that.
So is it your testimony that your figures now square with and reconcile with the engineer's figures?
They do.
At twenty-two point five nine feet?
Sure. And that's shown in ZN two oh one and two oh two, which I believe is A twenty-two and twenty-three now? And then there was another point from the both layers, was identifying the building mounted signs, signs. And so that is picked up on ZN two oh one, and that would, and would also make it consistent with the site plans as well. And there's a new door sign, an entry sign, and that's shown on the engineering drawings, as well as, that would be mounted right on the glass itself.
Could you show that to the Board, the location of the glass mounted sign as well?
It would be on the side of the vestibule, on the eastward side of the, and then, and then there's the specifics around the.
Yes.
And then additionally, there is a projecting sign off the building, on the rear of the building, that would pour the tenant upstairs.
And that's the one that's proposed to be two and a half feet by two feet?
Yes.
Where the other one is four feet square?
Yeah, and both of those are also shown in detail on the engineering drawings, but I think they wanted the consistency between the architectural drawings and the engineering drawing.
So now your plans go in, and Mr. Fisher plans go in.
Into it.
Directly, thank you.
And the other points really have to do with the new exhibit that we're putting today, ZN one, one, zero.
That's A twenty-six.
A twenty-six.
Right.
And that was asking, you recognize, or really denote all the pictures, building mounted pictures that were gonna be removed, and those that would be either replaced or new pictures. And there's a number of soft lights along the front of the building that are gonna be removed and not replaced. There will be a new light at the front door as required by code, as well as the back door. And, and in the downward area over there, I mean, the vestibule drive through.
Is that, is that former teller area light required by code, because it's an ingress, egress door?
Yes, okay. The, and in both the drive-throughs, there's existing surface mounting lights, that there's discussion about having those be recessed to minimize the glare going out from that. So, those have been noted as the existing lights to be removed and be replaced with these types of fixtures. There is, and there's several soft lights on the.
Just interrupt for a second, this is the document that was produced today.
That's correct.
So, I'm assuming that none of that was provided to the Board's review, is that correct?
Okay.
That's why you may not be finding it in the materials.
Yeah. Mr. Anderson, I have one question, on ZM one oh one, in my book, I'm not sure if it's the same as yours, you have a new projecting sign, although it's at the south. So.
You said ZM one oh one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a lit sign gonna be facing, because that is a residential area?
It is not.
Okay.
And it's shown.
Behind this one, actually.
It is shown in profile on the bottom drawing, number three on ZN two oh one. You can see that it's doubled in kind of back of the three, but it's not with. And there's also, just to follow, the soft lights.
Oh, I see, okay.
Are gonna be taken off the front of the building, and also be taken off the back. There is a light above the, regarding that, and lastly, there is a light which was mentioned, I believe, last year, on the eastward side of the eastward drive-through, that would be, I believe, at a level of sixteen feet off in the top.
And I'm assuming it's right.
And most, the photometrics of those will be discussed with Mr. Fisher and shown on his comments. But I think in the letters, they wanted to see both the architectural as well as the engineering to, so that there was no confusion of where those might be.
With regard to the sign in the back, that there's an existing building mounted sign, I think it was for the teller window, is that coming off?
That is.
Thank you.
And so it's gonna be just past the door, as to you won't hit your head on it, basically, because it's gonna go, well, if Jason comes by.
Nothing.
See if I felt that. So, and that, that was it, so we, I wasn't going to mention any of the adaptive reuse, all the things that we brought up at the last meeting. This is really just addressing a couple of the things that were brought up here that we wanted to, and we're, maybe just, and also address those points that were in the two review levels.
And that Board had some questions about how you were gonna treat the exterior, and we'd had some discussion, did you say that you were gonna whitewash the brick? Or am I making that up?
Referring to the elevation now, Mr. Anderson.
I am. And I don't know what number this was written prior to, but this is the same exhibit.
Okay.
Oh, A eighteen, thank you. I'd almost put, so, yeah, the fact of bringing that up, the, the thought would be the slate group would stay, it cleaned and repaired, it moved. The brick would be whitewashed, but not particularly white, they wanted to see some of the tone of the brick coming through there. The windows now, which are a mix of white windows that are the original ones in the building, and then what's commonly referred to as terronomic bronze for the teller area, and the front vestibule, all those are intended to be made into a uniform gray, to have them all work together. And otherwise, you know, some of the other things today, we talked about was that the cupola would be repaired, you know, that the, the pipe would be taken off, and the windows, but they were, in good enough shape, they would just be repaired in there, and if they were in bad shape, then they would be replaced in brown.
I have a question, is the, the bushes, the shrubs that are in the front, is that not enough to screen wires and feet? Without having to put something up there?
Yeah, and, and all we had, our review was done really before the planting plan was done, it was sort of based on what was there. I think Mr. Fisher's gonna be able to speak to that, but, you know, so we might do both, the planting plus whatever's done on the windows.
So the planting's still gonna go there, just maybe an extra, backs up with a film or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the top of the cupola, is where is a, is it a weather vane, and we talked about it last time?
It is.
It's an osprey.
It's an osprey. Is the osprey there now?
No.
Okay, and so is there a proposal to put an osprey on top of the cupola now?
There is.
Okay. And so I guess there just have to be some discussions as to whether or not there's a height issue there?
There is, there's, there's.
And it shows up in the A two oh one.
Yeah. I think, oh, it's a variance.
It's a thirty-inch tall. Yellow bed.
So how, how high does it go, what's the final height once you get to the top of that?
Was over the, the group was quite tall, you know, the pin with seven inches, and this would be any good chance of figuring when you come up with that.
So we've got the twenty-two and change, plus the ten, plus the thirty inches?
Yes, that sounds, that sounds right.
Okay, so you're getting up to about thirty-five feet at the top of the osprey?
Thirteen plus twenty-two and a half, a little bit more. Yeah. So the height is measured to the, the bridge line in the roof, and then there's a second ordinance section that talks about cupolas, and it gives it a permitted height. So they're permitted, and actually six feet high, and this one is?
Ten.
Ten, or thirty?
They can go six feet over the ridge as a permitted.
Yeah.
Extension, and, and anything beyond that requires bearing.
Yeah, so it's ten plus thirty, right? Yeah, it's ten point six existing plus the osprey, so it's thirteen point one.
Was the ten point six granted in the sixty-eight plan? But it is existing.
I don't know that it was ever called out, just sixty-eight approval, but to my knowledge, that cupola's been there for decades, but.
And cupola standard may not have existed in sixty-eight.
I'm just trying to think, what was granted and what extra?
Sure, fair enough, true. So this is exacerbating the height of it, for sure. But I, I think the intent there was to, you know, do something that, that didn't make it look as much like a bag, and, and have some character and some relevance for the exhibit, the area.
Is the only exacerbating feature the weather vane? Or is the only new? The only new feature, Doc, the, the cupola is there, it doesn't, it's, it's about four and a half feet taller than the six feet that's allowed. So that's there, we're not changing that, just rehabilitating it, but not adding to its structure, plus the thirty inches of the osprey weather vane.
So it's like seven feet above whatever the, plus or minus above whatever the six feet, is that right?
So it would be essentially slightly more than seven feet above the maximum six feet, yes, that, that's, that's the man, correct.
Okay. Is Mr. Fitcher gonna speak about the black wall?
He is. I have a number of questions, Chairman of the Board members, so Mr. Anderson.
So with regard to the rear and the lights that you've described, Mr. Anderson, these are all down-facing lights, they're, they're in the soffits, they're replacements of what's there, and you're actually gonna be putting in less than, than what's there now. There's a light at the door, at the two doors, one at the teller window in the, in the west, northwest side, and then one at the rear door. What kind of fixtures are those, are they down-facing?
They would be down-facing, they, actually, nothing specified as, yeah, I mean, a generic, they're gonna be down-facing.
Is, is it fair to assume they'll be akin to a residential fixture? Is is it fair to assume they'll be akin to a residential fixture?
Yes. Yeah, that's a, a good way to describe it, and it's really the character of the time of land.
Okay.
And the same on the the old drive through that's now the handicap spot on the east corner, it's gonna be, there's gonna be lighting on the back too, okay?
Um, there's, you know, there's gonna be recess light in the drive through itself. Again, I think they they can be able to try to keep the light and going sideways and trying to keep it going straight down that. But there is one, and I'll have ask Mr. Fisher to describe it, there was one going up on the gable. Here, sixteen feet off the grade, it's intended to to uh, downward facing uh, uh, and illuminate the parking area and then, well, you know, what, the guy.
Let's let them cover that.
We need to call our temperature as well and when we discuss it, I don't know if that's gonna be Mr. Fisher, the color temperature, maybe they're all uniform and.
Oh, that makes a big difference.
Huge. It's like on the mat suit, but.
Okay, you're done. Well done. Any any questions, Mr. Anderson?
No.
I'll also.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, applicant now, Paul Jason Fisher, licensed professional engineer and professional planer. And I believe Chairman, he could also qualify, Mr. Fisher, license.
Lose any licenses that you're here, Doc?
I hope not.
Not good. That's gonna be my follow up question.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Fisher, you had the opportunity to hear the testimony of Mr. Anderson, you reviewed his plans, your firm at your direction provided revised plans, you had the opportunity to review the board planners letter, you had the opportunity to review the board engineers letter. What can you tell us about some of the site details and leading us into the appearances to be identified?
Uh, before I start, I updated the rendering, we can mark it and hand it out if you want, but honestly, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between the last one if you still have it, so I I leave that up to you.
I'll take it now.
Yeah, okay.
Eight twenty-seven?
Where where's Walden? Gotta circle the differences.
Thank you. This was prepared when? Uh, let's see, we had a big one here. May sixteen, like it's back. Thank you.
All right, so.
Can we describe the exhibit briefly? It's uh, yeah, so it's the site plan that was submitted overlaid onto an aerial and color rendered to site. It is, boy, ninety-nine point something percent similar to the uh, site exhibit that we submitted last. So after the second hearing that we had in February, we heard your comments, uh, we saw the comments in your professionals review letters, heard some comments from the public, and we revised the plans and we resubmitted them to you. At that hearing in February, uh, also at the hearing in December, I provided detailed testimony about engineering, that was December, and I provided detailed planning testimony, that was February. And all of that testimony stands and continues to support our application based on revised plans that are thrown in tonight because again, the changes are very, very mild. So I'll briefly describe the changes that we made following the last hearing. There were two conditions in particular from the nineteen sixty-eight resolution that came up a few times, so I'll address those. The first is there was a condition that the curb radius at the intersection of Ridge of the Old and Smith Street be fifteen feet and it happens to be fifteen feet, so that was a successful condition in sixty-eight and we put that on our plans. There was also a requirement that a fence be maintained along the southern property line and then the rear portion of the western property line. That fence exists today and our plans call out because by last time we're gonna replace the fence essentially in time um, to maintain that condition. I believe the resolution required six with nine, so I thought the existing fence was five. If you're gonna replace it in time, are you replacing with five or are you going back to six? Uh, our intention was to go to six, but honestly, if you have a preference, either way.
I would firstly.
That's what we thought.
Yeah. I I I always thought.
Yeah, so and that's what our plans show is six.
That's referenced in your writing with four J.
I'm sorry?
That's referenced in your writing response, middle J.
Uh, believable, I think.
It says six feet there.
Yep, sixteen. And that's on our plans.
Mr. Fisher, um, this condition also talks about the fence going to the south, the western corner and then bending on the western property line?
Yes, we will maintain that as well.
Okay.
Yep, that exact, that exactly, that actually exists, it's just hidden by vegetation and structures, but it's there, we'll make sure it continues to exist. Um, as was mentioned before, there's an existing sign on the rear of the building for the previous drive through and that is called out on our plans to be removed. I think Donna had a picture of it in her review letter, so that'll come out. Uh, there was a comment about making sure the ADA parking space and the accessible route comply with ADA regulations, so we have notes on the plan to make sure that that complies. Um, we checked our topography online, by the way, it looks like it complies, it's very close, so that'll be adoring construction to be confirmed if there's anything that's offered and fixed. Uh, we also added a turning plan to show a vehicle exiting that last parallel parking space, so that would be the southernmost or westernmost, however you however you look at it. Um, we show that on there and that's that's a relatively easy maneuver for a vehicle, that's shown on the plans. We're also showing a new smaller freestanding sign, it's essentially in the same location as the existing one, it's just a little bit closer to the building, I'm talking by inches, maybe a foot, and that's just in order to stay outside of the site triangles. And that new sign again is smaller than what existed previously. The window sign uh, and the projecting sign, proj- uh, projecting sign were updated on our plans to include the areas. Um, I spoke to Mr. Rizzo and and he clarified, put uh, put that square foot is not only on the plan but on the detail, we're happy to do that. We added additional plants in front of the building, that's what we talked about before about the the glass by the reception area, so we now have um, plants on the plan, I'm just noticing, they are not on that updated exhibit, that was a mess, but they are on the plans that were submitted.
So they are present on um, what was identified as eight twenty-three?
That's the latest site plan from you?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, we also added more plants to supplement the the rear buffer, that's the southwest corner of the property. Um, the original application had nothing, the next revision of the plan showed three evergreens back there, this revision of the plan now shows four. We also added most deadlines to the plan. Um, this one, this next one might benefit from an exhibit. If you guys would like to see a an exhibit of lighting plan, or I can talk about it. I'll see the exhibit.
Yes, please.
Okay.
So eight twenty-eight?
Not much to say, but a picture's worth a thousand.
What's the date of the exhibit?
Uh, yesterday, five fifteen point four.
Thank you.
Sorry. So this, what's being handed out, I'm sorry, is eight twenty-eight? Um, eight twenty-eight. Uh, all that is, is the lighting plan from the plan that was uh, from the site plan that was submitted to you with one change, couple of notes for clarification, but in terms of the lighting plan itself, there's one change. And that change came from conversations I had with Jordan and Donna uh, in the days leading up to this hearing. Uh, the the main topic of this discussion is the parking space that's right adjacent to the refuse area behind the building and the parallel parking space that's just behind that. There's one school of thought that says on the plan prior to this exhibit that there was little to no light in those parking spaces and it would benefit from some light, so we added a light to the back of the building right above the refuse area that provides light for those parking spaces. Very significantly, the one of the cruxes of this uh, analysis is to make sure that there's no light spillage into the neighbor's property by putting that light there. Number one, that light is mounted on the building at eight feet high, it's very low, so that helped. We also have that six foot fence in the back that was modeled on this exhibit, so what you'll notice is zero point zero everything south of the fence, so there's no spillage onto the neighboring properties. We also initially proposed one type of wall mounted light where the light source had more visibility. Uh, Donna sent a suggestion of a different light where the light source is recessed more into the fixture, so we swapped it out during the analysis and that's what's on this exhibit here. So the the source of the light should have little to no visibility and there's no spillage onto the neighboring properties. Other than that, this lighting plan matches what was submitted prior. We did clarify a couple of things, we're referring to the architectural plans for the recessed lighting that goes into the two drive through. Uh, we pointed out the fact that there are uh, lights by each of the doors, uh, so that 'd be the door in the rear by the projecting sign, the main door in the front going in, and the other door by the old western drive through, those, as we said before, just residential style downward facing lights. Uh, and we also show, uh, we showed them before, but I think that it's better clarified here, uh, we have ground mounted lights uh, lighting the proposed freestanding sign and the existing flagpole. And I think that's, that's it for updates on the lighting plan. So I think it's correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at the last hearing, I think we came around on the lighting plan and we were happy with it. We now have this question of the light in the back, and the applicant's position on it is we're happy to put that light up or not, so that's up to you guys. Can can we just kind of walk the site as to where you're installing, I it may be maybe best to kind of walk the building?
Where the lights are?
I I think we can, I think we move beyond the the residential type fixtures around the doors.
Yeah.
And the recessed lights that are on the softs. We've got the rear light and we can talk about that, but just can we talk about other lights that are commercial lights that are projecting and what you may be putting on poles or proposing to put on poles? You're shaking your head now, there's none?
There aren't.
There aren't any. Yeah, we've we've been paring them away as we've done, Eric, we're down to two building mounted lights. So we've, so you've got the one in the back and where's the other building mounted light? It's on the eastern drive through facing northeast. Okay, so that one's gonna be pointed forty-five degrees to River Road? Yeah, the the main objective there is to light the driveway and the walkway from the um, eight, nine parking spaces to the building. Okay, and so then all the lighting data is based on the the lights that exist, because there's streetlights and some other things in this location? That was one of the revisions to the lighting plan prior where we added in the existing lights in the street, so this exhibit reflects that light. Okay, so the one in the back is because they don't really get the benefit of those streetlights that are already there, so so there's not a lot of light there as it sits today. On our prior analysis, that parking space right next to the the refuse cans showed lighting readings of fear. And I would assume that moving uh, a light underneath the drive and going from the uh, perimeter of the property back to the building would be a fairly significant undertaking versus installing one on the building? Fairly much so, and that also puts the light source closer to the property lines and right up against the fence, so you won't have the fence shielding it and you might have spillage. Would it be higher also? It would be higher than eight feet for sure. Okay. And the one that is um, by the handicap parking stall facing that direction, that's just generally a supplement as you get closer to the building where there's trip hazards and things like that, or does that relate to that?
Uh, pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
So any of the ones that were near the parking at the corner, those have been removed in the original plan?
The light poles?
Yeah.
They're all gone.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
So the uplighting with regard to um, the flagpole, I know that um, one of the residents was concerned based on the experience with the existing lights.
Yeah.
Can you help us understand how they're gonna be configured, what it's gonna feel like and what the purpose is? Yeah, well, um, one of the most important things, I'm just double check one thing on my plans if you don't mind, uh, there's been so many iterations of news and trash. Twenty-seven. All right, we don't have it on there. We have a spec for the light, um, for the uh, flagpole, like flagpole and the sign. These are intended for this purpose to prevent glare and and have uplight, they're they're uh, round and they have a shield on them and the light does not spread, it's it's a directed light. Um, we will add them to the to the plans, if you see fit to approve, we can put them on for residential clients. I have you seen, have I said?
You've even not said.
Actually, I have them in standouts, I I don't know if it helps to see a touchy bit. These are intended for um, this kind of lighting to prevent any glare or spillage or anything and they're they're pointed up.
Why don't you just.
One of the.
Yeah, because it's a shielded spotlight, right?
Um, I don't know if I call it, they call it accent lighting, I don't know that it's a spotlight, but.
Spotlight doesn't sound like it's an accent lighting, it sounds weird. Well, yeah. So you're right, a shielded accent.
Shielded accent better, even better. Okay, we're up to eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine, the shielded accent light considering.
So the light for the flag and the sign?
Yes. So the proposal is two on either side of the sign? Yeah, one on either side of the sign, so let me tell, let me uh, correct, so let me say one thing about um, flaglines. Um, you you have two options, by the way, this is an American flag, this is not an advertising flag and and that goes into the accessory structure thing, I don't see the flag poles in the same structure, if you do, that's fine, we can talk about it, but this is just the American flag, it's an existing pole, we're gonna have the American flag up there, not not ads. Um, with flags, you got the flag law and you have two options, the flag goes up or down with the sun or you light it when it's dark out. So um, putting it up and down with the sun every day could be very challenging, sometimes you're not there, whatever the place is gonna be, so ninety-nine times out of a hundred people elect to put lights on the flags and keep it up. When you light a flag, the rule of thumb is put three lights on. Two lights also works, one light doesn't work because one light is only gonna light one side and when the flag blows around, there's a lot of dark spots, it's just the handle. So that's the intention of having two lights on the flag to make sure it's properly red during the dark hours. Um, we would put three, but I think it gets kind of tight and the direction of light might be in question, so these lights are parallel to River Road, they're not pointed to River Road, they're not pointed into the building, they're up at the flag, parallel to the river. The sign obviously has two signs, so one one light for each side, so that's the logic on film.
Now, looking at the cut sheets, I see Mr. Fisher that the dimension, the the diameter of this light is slightly less than three inches. Yes, these are very small, it has that uh, shield, the cone shield on top of it and that's what helps direct it and it's actually adjustable, as you twist them, you can spread the beam, you can narrow the beam and focus it right on the flag and right on the sign. And this is a surface mounted, a ground mounted fixture, it's a ground mounted fixture, they're very small, six and an eighth inches, yeah.
So the sign itself is um, a a wood sign that is not backlit, it's only lit from the ground.
That's correct.
Uh, and I assume that if the board's upfit to approve the application, some language confirming that the lights are gonna stay kind of as they're intended. I I what what I find in my experience is that they're set up right originally and then landscapers knocked them and would have you in the middle of a line and at some point somebody calls and isn't happy, I would assume the applicant all the way back to the resolution can just reset them if needed.
We have, we have no, no issue with that, Jim. That's an easy maintenance item and the other benefit we have is an owner operator, so we have a lot of character. Mr. Fisher, on your lighting plan, it says uh, no, light, light, light should be turned up one hour after close business, does that include the signage light as well or just the uh?
That was intended to be the um, the light above the western drive through and the one in the back, uh, obviously the flag lights will stay on last year for all purpose. Um, I think the intention was to keep the uh, the sign lit, if that's okay.
I'm just trying to figure out which which lights are different, it says sunlight and business light, so.
Can we look at the spec on the sign? Um, there are no variances required for the sign, right?
Well, the sign's not permitted in the zone. So you have typical, Chairman, a typical sign in the commercial zone that's permitted is twenty-five square feet, we're at twenty-four feet.
Okay.
What was permitted in nineteen ninety-five at least was a twelve foot high sign, we're down to less than seven.
So so let's assume for a second, Jordan, that we're in a commercial zone.
Yeah.
Um, the they'd be permitted twenty-four square feet total?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
And we're at twenty.
Okay, and the height requirement or min- maximum, minimum, what what would that be?
Uh, it looks like twelve, fourteen, that's great.
So were the old ones approved?
That's correct.
So the new ones?
Twelve feet is is the max.
So the new ones proposed have a maximum height of seven feet, sixteen eight inches, yeah. Okay, so slightly less than than that.
Are you still going with it on the site, it says ten and two, I thought that was, I remember from this meeting, we talked about not having ten and two on the site, on the sign, because we're only going with a single tenant occupancy.
That's correct.
Uh, referring to the project. No, the freestanding sign says Mike Duffy is on below this is tenant number two.
Correct.
But we're limiting. I think in our last meeting, we only approved one, the single tenant.
No, we, it was um, there was a tenant that was pulled out and then during the discussion of the hearing, uh. The gym, we'll call it, the training, whatever. Was gonna take over the whole building and then later in the discussion, the applicant, Mr. Anderson, said he will put his office upstairs in a small space, so that's tenant number two.
Until until such time as.
The gym takes over.
Takes over.
Correct.
And if that doesn't happen, I believe the resident says that's extinguished.
Yeah, it's only one tenant allowed.
It does say that.
So at such time as that were to occur, then the tenant two sign would come off?
I'm sorry, I I understand what you're saying now, so once the gym does expand, then tenant two, that's when it gets extinguished.
Right, I understand.
Correct, that's not. Then will the sign change? Will you just pull that off?
It's not that, certainly that could correspond to the single user, if that if that happened. That would make sense.
Well, she'd just be able to be, you know, remove or easily. All there.
Like, yeah, I think the sign should follow the use.
Uh tha- that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
The sign should follow use.
I I just want to make sure that I understand with regard to where the sign fits relative to parameters, size of lettering, colors and those sorts of things. And um the standard would be what's what's permitted in commercial now, so the size of the lettering. The the number of colors, we have we have details on all those things, right?
It's C seven hundred on. One thing I just want to get clear real quick is. The site point is. I make a sign called the seventy. So it's seventy proposed to the post and then. So I think for the.
And so it's 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 open at the bottom, then you have sign and then you have.
Post that extends above the top of the sign.
What's the width of the sign?
Forty one.
The the sign itself is forty feet and then the post four inches, four inch pose.
Alright, and I didn't hear answers to the questions as to the size of the letters and the colors, but it's proposed to conform to whatever the commercial standard is as to say.
Do we know what the width of the existing sign is? Uh we know it's a different shape, it's wider.
Two point six seven feet by eight feet.
Eight feet. And here we're going.
Mr. Fisher, are you saying you will comply with the.
Letters.
I I think the lettering, whatever the ordinance says for the business zone.
That was the question, I thought the answer is yes, that it was gonna conform.
Did you comply or you will comply? Well, when we talk about letters, actually, what are you looking at, hold on one second.
Yeah, cause it's it's got kind of a logo effect.
That, correct, that's what I was gonna say, so the five fifty up top, the the tenant, uh the phone number. Tenant two tentatively, that's lettering that would conform to your ordinance, the the Mike Duffy's personal training, that to me is a grapple. Uh that's not lettering, that that's how I would do it.
So like a logo?
Yes, it's on the, it's what's shown on the plan.
The sign detail. I I I'm wondering where the ordinance addresses it and whether it conforms or doesn't conform or being asked to grant some sort of a deviation.
I don't believe there's a, you have the height and you have the area. Don't believe there is a lettering required, if I imply, I think we looked at that last night.
I thought there was, but so, Jordan, if you could take a look, um. And there's no issue with regard to visibility, there's no issue with site lines when you're coming out of these entrances or exits?
No, so we added the site triangles to the driveway on the other side of it. And the new sign, like I said, is shoved back as though just to stay outside of the the site.
Can you please just clarify for me, when the second floor use? Ends, yes, we're saying we're going to re-sign the bottom portion or you're gonna remove it?
Well, it would be removed, I don't know if they would re-sign and use it or just color it a solid color, I don't know what they would do with that.
Proposing to maintain the sign area or we should reduce?
No, we would not reduce the sign.
Want to maintain any table, make design applicable to the.
Correct. Yes, yes. And I only have one other thing, just to wrap up in terms of changes, um there is the uh the tree on the. Northwest corner of the property.
Northwest corner.
Um western drive through exit, there's an existing tree there that we called out to be removed and replaced with a freight hurdle. Um there was a discussion about replacing something different, keeping it so on so on, I I spoke to Donna, I spoke to the applicant. The applicant says let's read the tree as is, which I think makes Donna happy, so I think we're all happy.
Everybody good on the lightage, lighting in the sun?
Yes.
So my biggest concern is drainage, um and I know that the original sixty eight resolution called out requirements with regard to pitch of asphalt. And I think the focus was to make sure that this water gets to River Road.
Yeah.
I know that remilling and repaving is a really big deal, do you have any more data with regard to the current pitch of the of parking areas?
So we have topography, uh we talked about this in the last hearing and since then I spoke to Jordan and the topography that we have. Shows that the water goes out through the road. That that's significant, what's also significant, and even more, Jordan, is that the water will not go south to the neighbors because there's a curve. So all the water that lands on the pavement, the building itself, that gets out to River Road. There was a condition in the sixty eight resolution, Boo and I talked about that as well. Um we believe that, and I don't want to speak of the building, but we believe that that uh condition was met. And there's no changes here that warrant anything further.
Okay, so what I would be concerned about would be pooling in the parking area and then water exiting to Smith Street. Um and it seems to me that there's gotta be a way without repaving to trap that water so that it isn't going in that direction. I'm not asking you to do anything, but what I'm asking you is feasibility, uh like a speed bump or something. Which would capture that and make sure that it then pools in, directs to River. Um is that, is that a really dumb idea, does that make sense? Um if that in the future became a problem, if things settle too over time, right?
Yeah, I mean, in the future, if that becomes a problem, we could look at it, um. Unfortunately, my plan is too small.
Are you about the eastern driveway entrance?
Yeah. Yeah, so what I can't see on here, George, you have full size, maybe you can confirm. It's one thing to prevent the water from the site to go out to Smith and then head south or east, whatever that is. Which I think is what you really want to.
Yeah.
The other thing, and this is where I want to check the total, I can look here, is if the water needs to come into the site to get out to River Road, we want to allow it to. We don't want to create a pond in Smith Street now.
The water would have to jump up.
Which way did it go?
I think that ponds, I think.
This is the pressure right there on Long Back.
So so here's what, here's what I was thinking, um. If in fact, it turns out that there's some evidence that we have water coming from this parking area and going in that direction. Um would the applicant be agreeable to addressing that problem at that time? Through some sort of mitigation effort at the um at the entrance? To my mind, it's the installation of something that would bar the water from going that way. And I want to put a tool in the hand of the rural engineer, in i- if in the event, look, ju- just so it's clear in case anyone doesn't know. Immediately behind this is the worst drainage problem in Bay. Um it's been that way for decades and decades and decades, and it was that way when this project was originally created in sixty eight.
Yeah.
Um and so what I'm, what I'm focusing on is not having that problem continue and making sure that this property doesn't contribute to it. And so what I'm asking is, if the board saw fit to approve the application. And were to add into um the approval, a condition that to the extent that there is evidence that water's moving in that direction. That the applicant will be obligated to find a way to make sure it stops.
Moving in the direction of from the site to Smith and then toward Cologne.
Correct.
We want to prevent that.
So once you get into Smith, it drops and it it's gonna go that way. I believe that you are slightly elevated from the street, I can't say I measured it. Um and I don't think there's any water coming from Smith across you back over the river.
No, I agree, there's no.
I'm looking at it now, it's not, it doesn't do that. And so what I'm asking is, is there other practical solutions to that problem that you could implement at that time? Or am I talking about something that will be impossible?
I think that's fair, I think that a trench drain could be installed. I mean, so it would be a temporary solution, um and again, ultimately try to drain to the pound if you pitch it towards. As to the north to the landscape area.
So when there's water there, Jordan, there's a lot of water, not a little bit of water, we're tossing. Um so it's, it's getting real bad.
Yeah, it it gets uh, that gets tricky, um the the answer, the general answer to your question is yes, you can work something out.
Love that answer.
As as long as it's on the applicant's property, right? Um because once we start getting into added structures and sending the water somewhere. What we don't want to do, I presume, is send the water toward Colonial. Which means we have to send it to River, now we're into the county, the county probably gonna tell us, get your water out of here. So that's why I'm saying if we can limit it to, if necessary, put a speed bump, we'll call it. On the applicant's property in the driveway and let that solve the problem and leave it there, then I I think that would be okay.
I'm good with that, look, if I thought you had a place to put drainage on site, we'd be talking about it, but you really, you really don't.
I have a question about the roof leaders. Um I was looking at that, uh just pictures of the property, because I didn't see anything on. The plan here about where the leaders are, where they go, and I can see that one just sort of. Dumps out on the parking lot by the handicap parking space. Uh one farther west goes into the ground and then comes out. Of the curb in the driveway and then the. Presume goes on to River Road. There's at least three other leaders on the front of the building, they go into the ground and I didn't see any. Obvious indication of where they went, do you have an idea where they go?
I don't, they might have connected to the other one that went out through the curb in the driveway, but no, I don't.
So roof leaders don't know where they go.
Right.
Is there a good place or a bad place?
I don't know, I'm just asking if we know where they go now.
Okay.
Um you know, I mean, if if you.
The water will ultimately, the way the site is graded, the water will ultimately get to River, you know, it goes down the roof leaders and gets out.
Yeah, unless it recharges, it'll move out to.
I'm not aware of any drywall, so that doesn't mean they're there.
I mean, there used to be a septic, I think. On the west side of the property.
Septic?
Yeah, that was in the original, um. I don't know if it was the intension of minutes, but they talked about a septic. On the west side.
That's most likely.
I'm assuming there's connected to the sewer.
Oh yeah, then this, this is on.
So so here's what I'm assuming, here's what I'm assuming, a- anything that drops off of that building is going eventually to wind up in the parking lot. Or it's going to um percolate into the the limited grass areas, it's gonna go to River, you know there's a problem at River too. It's, there's times there where I I I've seen pictures and it's deep. Um it is what it is, you can't solve everybody's problems.
One thing worth noting on on that, by the way, usually the development applications, we've added things, but this we have reduced. Yeah, and for whatever it's worth, the county did give final approval, so. Kind of plain.
Well, look, I I'm focusing on Mr. Shuavati's question and if there were a better place to put it. Where if you got it over to one side or the other and wound up somewhere else, but I I don't see where in the end, moving it slightly is gonna get it to a different end location.
No, I I think what you have now works because all the water eventually gets out to River, whereas if you start collecting it and discharging it. Now you have a point discharge on the whole world, rather not do.
So. Let's say we're fifteen years from now and the parking lot needs to be redone, let's say you were dropping this in here now. Would there be a way to do underground detention underneath the parking area?
We'd have to check the soils to answer that, in theory, yes. But we'd have to check the soils to make sure the water can move through the soil and that groundwater is not too shallow.
Yeah, so 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 the question's similar to the original question, if that were happening ten or fifteen years off. Um you know, because right now you you've got it, and and I think in fairness, it's it's there today. You know, we're, we're talking about reusing it and I think that there's a lot of this that just makes sense, that's how we've gotten this far. Um if in fact, though, you had to start over again, and I I don't know what the life cycle is of the Spartan area. Um but if at some point it were coming up anywhere and there were an opportunity to bury some of this in order to make it better. It would seem to me that that would be prudent, I suspect the applicant would want to do that as well, but every once in a while we get pinned at the acne, and people ask us what we've done. Um would it be unreasonable to suggest that if in the future? Maybe you can let me, Doug, I mean, to the extent that this were being redone, would it be reasonable prospectively to say? At that time, there would be an expectation that the drainage would be improved through the installation of something underground?
I would say if you do that, temper the language more to, there would be an expectation that it would be investigated. Because if if the geotechnical engineers go out there and say this isn't happening, then then we'd be stuck.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't want that, what what can you do at this time to confirm? We're more limited jurisdiction in a sense than the duration and it's this applicant that's come before us. Um well, but there are standards, right, so we've been talking about this around town in terms of what we're gonna drop underground. There's there's standards with regard to um what soil, what types of soil per. Where your water table is overall, and and Jordan would tell you if we were trying to put a drywall in here, that there would be an objective standard as to whether or not it would work, right? And so that standard may grow over time, but it's gonna be an on or off situation, either it would or wouldn't work. And if it would work, technically, the only, the only ceiling on that maybe would be expense, I I'm not suggesting some, I don't want to suggest something. That would make this not viable economically. Um but in my experience, some of this stuff is tubes and plastic and fabric and rock and it's not a big deal. At least not for me, that is until it's where it's gonna go, I think that's what.
Yeah, the stuff you just mentioned is a big deal, thi- this um. Doing a dry, drywalls are are generally a good way to go with stone, they're the least impactful and expensive and all that kind of stuff, this site would be tricky. It would be very tricky on this site, which which makes it out of proportion with the application.
And I would say that perhaps it would be linked to some kind of a material, right, a material improvement at the site.
I think I'd like to work something up, I I recognize that there 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 should be some parameters and I'm not trying to do pie in the sky. I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, if in the future it's happening, people are thinking about it, looking at it. And doing reasonable things to make it better if you can. So can we charge, can we charge the applicant to consult with our engineer to come up and? Again, it's all about me, about the guy who's gonna write this resolution, I'd like to have language that both of you are. Acting with, but I'd also like to you to excuse. You can do that, right, Jordan?
It's it's not so it's feasible without doing any investigations.
No, no, yeah. But the investigation will be later.
I I mean, it's tricky. I literally just tried to do this. Three, five days ago in my backyard and Marty Ryan's really been working my house, he's like, well, we got a lot of clay there. And I started digging below that lovely red sand that we have, there is a lot of clay. Right, I did what you did. Uh what you were suggesting, you know, uh fabric wrap and I had leftover wraps, so I was like, Marty, get in here.
Right.
He's like, do that and, you know, it'll help, but still, it's not gonna perjure it down with the stuff. Right, so I think, Jordan, what we would probably like to do is put it somewhere in this that. If that parking lot is paved, to do some kind of, um. You know, survey, see what's the best way to get rid of this water, because there might be. You know, we we think that, you know, uh this area is that red sand that we see everywhere, there's clay everywhere.
Yeah.
And the water table is, and it's risen by two feet.
The only thing, the only thing is though, if they don't do it now, to mill it and then dig it off to do that is a dramatically.
But if they do do it ten years down or fifteen years down or put something in there to say, listen. Let's explore ways that we can keep, better ways to keep this water within the property. And then I come back and say, you know, another way to really do, but at least it's in the wording that they do it.
I'm just saying functionally, when they redo the parking lot, it's actually a next level thing, it's not like they're gonna be down there anyway, it's a next level. It's your milling.
Years if they paved it, they repaved it. And then it's. A month later, a year later, it's it's realized that it's in the resolutionist condition, that they already paved it.
Yeah.
We maybe do it right away, do they?
I mean, to repave it as it is, they need a construction permit, I'm assuming?
So. Milling it and repaving it is entirely different from removing it and replacing it, yeah, and so we're talking about two different things, let's not, let's not mix the two.
That's the. Request for a material clause that I. For, right, it's gotta be, there's gotta be a material change, not just a maintenance.
And even if I think they re-mill it and repave it, we could put something in there that they. And even if I think they remill it and repave it, we could put something in there that they improve the slope. So it is more away from these problem areas that we have on Smith and in that that area.
I I think that the the sixty-eight condition with regard to the pitch is established. I think that the language that we have can simply amplify. The board sensitivity to it, the necessity that it be managed over time. That if there is a full replacement and an opportunity to put in underground detention, that it be investigated and to the extent that it's feasible. That it be installed at that time. We'll work up the language, we'll get there. Um, I I, nobody's trying to hurt anybody.
I'm sure that, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, it's also very sensitive, cause I mean, we all know it's been raining nonstop, and everyone's backyard is a sponge.
Be if the parking lot is reconstructed, not overpaid, reconstructed, that the roof runoff descent. Because that's the cleanest step provides the drywall with the most longevity. It's the cleanest water.
You rather, we don't wanna take uh, water from the parking lot, put it underground, right?
Yeah, there's there's rules about that too.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, got it. Anything else on the site? So you kinda started with what you changed from last time, but are are we oriented with the site? Is there anything else on here that we need to talk about?
Nothing that we haven't covered at the prior two hearings.
So landscaping, you're you're installing the uh, effectively a hedgerow in front of those parking spaces.
Correct.
You've talked about the plantings on the westerly side.
Yes.
Um, in the front of the building. It looks like you've got a number of plants in front of the existing um, ATM area.
That was the uh, the whole thing about the reception area and the glass wall and providing company.
No, this is actually on the side of that.
There's existing shrubs in front of the vegetables, that's a true principle. We were asked last time to add those shrubs right in front of the old ATM. It's a block. I thought it was the reception area, but it's all glassed.
Okay.
So now we have shrubs across the whole front.
And are you planting any shade trees along River Road, or are they already there?
They are there.
Planting one.
Uh, you're already talking about the one on the on the west side?
Yeah.
No, that uh, the existing tree that says to be removed, that's gonna remain. That's a big one.
So with regard to the parking along the southerly side, the parallel spaces.
Yes.
We kind of, we had talked about this, and we talked about whether or not they were gonna be functional and useful, and talked about pulling in driver's side door. Buttoning up against the fence. How deep are those stalls based on your striping?
They are twenty-two feet long, eight feet wide. Pretty standard, and and one is seven feet. The one in the back, it is seven feet by eighteen feet. It doesn't need to be twenty-two, because you could pull straight.
I'm not worried about the length. I'm worried about the depth of them, and I I think it's a practical matter. You're gonna find that people are gonna park the way I would. At probably ten feet, so I ring open my door without hitting the fence. What happens to the, to the traffic flow if that happens?
I, nothing really. I I think what really is gonna happen is people are gonna park in those nine spots that are angled, cause they're not gonna need the four.
Yeah.
We'd like to keep the four six. Um, just in the rare event, there's a lot of cars there. I don't think it's gonna happen too often. If people do, now we have by that seven by eighteen parallel space, we show an eighteen foot wide drive aisle there, which is what. Your ordinance requires for the angle of space. If for some reason that person parks ten feet out, I think that's a little bit of exaggeration, but let's go with it. Um, that eighteen feet shrinks down a little bit. It's still in a function, and it's gonna be for a very limited time.
Well, that eight, that that eighteen is the pinch point, right? It actually increases from there.
That's correct. Behind it is a lot bigger, and I should say east and west of it, it gets a lot bigger. So that is a bottom.
So it opens, Mr. Fisher, as one heads west on the site, that eighteen feet opens, it becomes greater.
Gets bigger, that's about twenty-two wide, and it's it's one way to, yeah, so.
You can have regular users here. They're gonna get familiar with the way it works. They're gonna know where they don't wanna park. There are some street spaces that they can wind up using. Um, it it's it's reused versus laying it out originally, then, you know. I got it.
Yeah, you're right. It's a different animal going with reuse versus new design, yeah.
And what's even more different than that is doing the nuspor, pitching pipes that an inch over a hundred feet, drive a guy like me crazy.
Uh, any other questions for Mr. Fisher with regard to the second? Crosswalk, is that him? Is that, is that a crosswalk?
Yeah, it is there, yes.
So that's in front of the handicap stall angled to the main crosswalk on River? Is that what that is?
Yeah, that's where it is, correct.
So that's gonna be newly striped, or that's there?
That's there.
It's there. It's angled for how the driveway exists now. And that's gonna be the new pedestrian path travel, the drainage of the driveway.
It used to be an ADA accessible route. We don't have it that way, but that's one of the reasons it will serdue us.
Your question?
Yeah, I don't know questions for, but um. At the beginning of this, they said that they're basically taking. The sixty-eight resolution and building or improving off of that.
Right.
Um. And we had questions last time around, but I don't know if we had answers um, as to the fact that the sixty-eight resolution. Called out a one-story building of twenty-three hundred square feet. Um, but what we have now is a two-story building of. Thirty, what, thirty? Story and a half, story and a half building of thirty-eight hundred and change. Is that right, thirty-eight sixty-six or something like that? So if we're building off of that original. Resolutions.
Yeah.
How are we getting to a story and a half and thirty-eight hundred square feet from? One story and twenty-three hundred square feet?
Well, let's frame the first piece of that. So we're measuring square footage now differently than they would have in sixty-eight, that's for sure. So if we have plans that are currently measured based on the existing um, standards and ordinances, it's gonna measure different. On the, on the second story, you've got half of the second story, which is mechanical, and the condition. That's gonna be in the resolution that was offered by the applicant was that that's never gonna be finished or used. It's full of ductwork. I've I've seen it. It it you would have to retool the entire thing.
But I mean, we had pictures of that, yeah.
Yeah, but I believe the applicants, so so there's only fifty percent plus or minus. On this, on the second story, which is, which is usable, um. And I think, Al, that that there, there may well simply be a, um. I I I don't know, I don't know what what they were thinking in sixty-eight and what they intended. But I, but I can assure you, based on the finishes on the second floor, cause I just walked the building, that there are, it's old. The bathrooms are very old, I mean, at at least eight months, um, if not earlier. I I I don't think that. Um, I have any reason to believe that what's there today was built outside of the scope of what was intended for. To the extent it was, it's been sitting there for decades. Um, and the applicants proposed to make no modifications to the footprint of the building. And and only to clean up what's there.
Is our reservation gonna be referencing the sixty-eight resolution and the. Parameters of the sixty-eight resolution and this is what we are tweaking, or is it gonna start?
So so what I would suggest is we're gonna start with sixty-eight, and we're gonna lay on top the plans that we've got in front of us tonight. And so the issue of the square footage, to the extent that they're inconsistent, would be uh, reconciled with the plans that we have at present. There are other conditions with regard to the sixty-eight approval that related to offsite parking. Um, I believe that because of the extensive discussions we've had about this particular user. And the devariance that granted is specific to this user, that that, unless people wanna talk about it. Um, I mean, the original approval provided for being twenty-two spaces offsite. Um, I don't think this applicant needs that. I don't think this applicant is offered to provide that. So as an example, I I think that when you read it all together and you get that that wasn't a condition, but you could go through it more specifically and. Pull things out.
So we we were charged with reconciling those conditions, and I think by our discussion, we've done that. Let me just run through them briefly. Then we'll revisit them to see if you think we haven't done them. So the. Referring back to the nine conditions of the sixty-eight resolution, right? First was to make sure there was a conveyance of adequate right of way land. I think that's, that's great way. Number two, fifteen-foot radius, Mr. Fisher testified that in the recital. Number three, the six-foot fence, we're gonna replace in kind with a six-foot fence. Number four, the lights moved, because now we have a lighting plan that produces the light, right? Number five, um, utilities underground, but whatever is there, we haven't changed. Number six, sign. Move, again, we got a new sign plan that eliminates the prior non-conformities, even though there was a variance issue for the twelve footer, right? Number seven, the drainage, I think we just provided a good methodology to resolve that in the context of. In fairness, rational nexus for the applicant as well as, you know, the board's concerns.
So I think we're building off of that, though.
We are, yeah.
Because it really, it establishes a standard and a concern, and what we're, what we're doing is we're, we're, we're leaving what's there. And we're talking about adding a couple of things.
Correct.
Future, so it's all gonna be together.
Number eight, suitable offsite parking for the staff. We just said that's mooted because we park onsite now. And number nine, building for the, uh, build, build that building for the building code. Obviously, any new improvements would have to meet the current building code. And those are the nine conditions.
Zach, no?
I I just wanna make sure that there's a path from what we say we're building off of. To what we're getting, that's all.
Well, there there's no path to reconcile one story, one and a half story of what's there. Well, I think the reconciliation is that we've got very clear plans now. We've got a very clear understanding of how they're gonna be used, and that's the proposal, and if we prove it, we're approved.
And we're a contract buyer, a new contract buyer that just bought a car, so we had nothing to do with the creation of what's there. Whether it was built in sixty-eight, seventy-eight, eighty-eight, whatever, we bought it just a year ago.
Right. Okay.
Back to you. Uh, no further questions to Mr. Fisher at this time, sure.
Do you have any more testimony?
No more testimony.
Any questions for the open public? Okay, any members of the public that have any questions or like favorite comics regarding the application? Please step forward and uh, give us your name and your address.
David Bordelawn, sixteen Colonial Court. Hi, um, I've spoken with the applicant uh, previously. I would plan to see that the building is getting used. The concerns that I have, uh, you've addressed many of them with the lighting and the water. Um, there is an existing problem with the sightline right when you come out of Smith. The hedges that front um, River Road right now, when you're at Smith trying to look up, you cannot see to the left. The hedges are too high right now. So that's something that I'm not sure if the town planner has really looked into yet. The um, other question, and this is something I did speak to the applicant about. And it's a problem of noise, and this wouldn't have even crossed my mind. Uh, except for ride, is now, there is substantial noise leakage from ride. And it comes all the way down the block.
Ride is a user in the acne parking lot in Rad Extension that cops to Colonial?
Correct, correct. And um, it's already creating noise pollution. So that would just be a concern that I have, and I'm wondering, has the zoning board looked at ways of examining or mitigating the noise that might come? From this particular facility.
So we did talk about that last time, so put, put, put what we talked about on pause for a second. Let's go back to ride then. Are rides activities inside of the building or are they outside the building?
I can hear it when I stand on my, I just go down my street, I can hear it, down three houses down.
So they're inside the building and you're still hearing it through the wall?
Yeah.
So, okay, um, Mr. Kovacs, can you, do you have a copy of the uh, resolution with regard to use? And the conditions that are specific to the exterior? Um, Dave, as I recall, um, what we've conditioned the approval, the prior approval on was no exterior speakers. No exterior activities. Um. There is, there was discussion about time, but the borough establishes when, when they can open and when they can close. I think we basically eliminated any exterior.
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah.
And I, did we do anything further than that?
My, my opinion on that is that the two businesses are different in that. Um, I live on in the, near um, near the old Clementine Studio and. They're loud, you know, those, those, and I don't know how people put up with it, but this is totally, I I think the business model is different than the spin classes, which. Uh, and loud music is a, is a function of them.
Yeah, the applicant talked to me about that, but I'm just concerned just because I I want to try to alleviate any problems before they come up. Um, like, uh, for instance, if the building would change hands in a different exercise studio with gamer, if they changed their model.
I assume intention of only one, only one. Once he leaves, the use goes away and they will have to come to the board.
Yeah, truly, this applicant in the way he's gonna use it, and I would say this. The, the issue that we get into is how you're using the inside of your building.
Right.
If you have a noisy neighbor that likes to crank Metallica at all hours of the day, there are ordinances actually that are intended to address that.
Right.
And even with regards to ride, that may be something worth looking into and discussing with council, whether or not the existing ordinances are effective. Whether or not there's any monitoring, and whether or not that can be looked into. A universal restriction on all users would make sense. What you would need to do here to go further than we've done is to start evaluating sound attenuation with regard to the structure itself. Which is particularly complicated, um, if you were building from scratch. Um, and it can be expensive, but they're not actually proposing to do anything that we would necessarily build that into. Um, this is also a brick mason restructure, although I'm not sure that the ride studio isn't, um. We did explore it. I I I want you to understand that we did think about it and talk about it. I'm trying to give you another avenue to think about where it might be addressed.
Sure, sure, and I just wanna commend you folks on the lighting, cause that was another concern that I had. I think you guys did a great job of addressing that.
So the applicant did, just so you understand, the applicant originally came in with the idea that they wanted to conform with what the current standards were. The minute the board said, we're in a residential zone here, does that make sense? The applicant pulled back. And did a lot of manipulation of what some of those ideas were to conform to your neighborhood.
Yeah, everything I heard tonight sounded really good. I particularly liked that you brought up the drainage, and I was glad to hear that the board is aware of the drainage problem.
Certainly all.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Blazer's behind us, she's on her way. Little closer, Ms. Blazer.
Would you like to see a picture of water in the street on the road? By my house in the back?
Is yes the right answer?
No, it's a two, totally a two.
Do you have a photo on a piece of paper that we can submit an evidence? Your phone. The, the problem is that we can't capture that into the record. Can you describe for us? I mean, first of all, I I think we talked about it last time, and and I've certainly seen some photos, and I think we're generally aware of it. One of the problems with regard to that is that that's a problem created by multiple properties in the area and general drainage patterns.
There's a slight slope to River Road, so it goes down, and that's what exacerbates, there won't be Michael B. Sellers driveway and down the back. You're already saying back on the road, but anyhow. That's a, my big comment is. Yes, it is still a residential zone, and if we took off the cupola and the osprey, which are not logos like McDonald's golden arches. So they're not necessary. If we play with the building more into the neighborhood, if we gain rent.
Thank you, Ms. Blazer. Donna, do you have any thoughts on that from a planning perspective? I I I know that for me, I I find it to be nice. Um, I don't, I don't find it offensive, but is there a planning analysis?
I mean. I think the sign is the thing that makes it look. Like a commercial property more than the people where the. Well, the weather vane, houses have people's and weather vanes. You know, maybe it's not a traditional combination with the style of building, one-story ranchish looking, but. Uh, I I don't think there's. Necessarily a planning connection.
So, my perspective on this is that.
I mean, the drive-throughs are larger, you know, impact on the commercial aspect of the building than I think the people.
Yeah, well, I think that's fair, and I think that that's very straightforward. The, the issue with regard to the, to the osprey in particular is that there's variance triggered for it. The, the ten-foot cupola as it exists today seems to have been part of the building from when it was originally built, even though it isn't identified in the resolution. Um, I'm not sure how the other board members feel. I don't know if there's anyone else here that has any particular opinion about it. It strikes me as, as neutral and personal preference. I don't see it as. I I actually, I I find it a bit, I I don't know, I I don't feel strongly about it, but.
My only thought about that was, you know, you mentioned you're gonna repair the cupola. Cupola's not a structural element, I mean, just the box basically sitting on top of the roof. Cupola's not a structural element, I mean, just the box basically sitting on top of the roof. So if you're gonna repair it, why not bring it down to six feet?
The, I think the testimony was the windows would be repaired if necessary, because they're boarded up. But I'm not sure itself is intact.
But I mean, the cupola itself, but if you're gonna work on it, I mean, it's literally just a box. And you could take a saw to four, three feet on top of that box, cut it down. You know. I personally, here, my, my feeling, I agree with the chairman, I have no personal problem with the cupola. But, it's not, it's not a big fix, is what I'm saying.
I, I don't, I don't actually have a problem with that, I, I think it looks nice and it'll tie anything to the, I think it's a nice element, it's just.
Someone in the resident neighborhood.
No, no, understood, I, I don't, I don't.
And if, and if they lowered it.
Also, I also don't think there's any way function, it looks like a ranch with or without a cupola.
But if you put, but if you took, if you took three feet off the cupola, what is it, ten feet now, you broke that, or you broke that to six feet, then you put another. Thirty inches on top of it, that's eight and a half feet, and we solve a lot of problems.
I'm not sure any problems are solved. Uh, I think we spend a little bit of money, I think we wind up with something that maybe for a layperson wouldn't be, would sound a bit different. Uh, one of the things that I think about is, what if the maximum height in this zone, I know if it were a residential structure, thirty. What if we were in commercial, what would be the maximum height for the building, ridge height? It'd be thirty-eight, wouldn't it?
Thirty feet, thirty.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, in business one or business two, it would be thirty feet. In residential, it'll be thirty, I'm asking you if this were in the business zone, or else it easily could. So, so just be mindful, while this is in the residential zone, this is not unlike all of our commercial district, it backs up on residential. So, we're sensitive to it because this is resi, but the bottom line is, it's really no different than many of the other areas. What I'm offering is this alternative perspective of if you were building new, I believe you can go to thirty-eight feet.
Be, be one of, be one of B two or thirty-five.
Yeah, and I think that, I think the overlay zones with regard to the affordable housing lets it go off to thirty-eight. And you'll see thirty-eight when Sonoco gets built out, and it is massive.
Yeah.
And this is not, and so in, in comparison and with regard to the cupola, I, I'm looking at it on balance, and I'm like.
My point is, I don't have a problem with the other, that was a suggestion. But, you know.
I think it looks so much nicer as it does on the, on the drawing, I mean, than it does right now. Right now, it's all painted, or I don't know, you said there were, what's boarded, right, so once that, it'll, it'll almost appear smaller. Because it's, well, the painting, then the darker.
It's gonna be a huge improvement to this.
So, stretch.
I like, I like the osprey. Looks better than ospreys.
Yeah, I'm, uh, David Bordelone again, I am directly behind the bank, I like the cupola, I think it actually, uh, makes the building look better. So, uh, I think even as is with the osprey, with the, uh, and again, I am directly behind the bank, so I see the cupola every single day.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, you're also talking about whether something fits in with the character of the neighborhood. That's been there. Yeah, right. It's, it's part of the character of the neighborhood already, it's. Now, my, my, the one question I do have about it though is if you're unboarding the windows or repairing those. You're not planning on putting any lights inside the cupola, right? No.
That might be worth noting in the Rosa, we've had that problem in other places. Yeah, yeah.
That's true, it could move in, probably.
Yeah, are there any other residents with any other questions or comments regarding the application? Rather, uh, let the record reflect on, okay, anything in closing?
Uh, other than to say that, uh, the applicant appreciates the opportunity to work through the conditions, reconcile the sixty-eight conditions. Improve upon the site based upon the viewer's comments and interactions with professionals. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to present this face, the site face, before you receive it. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott.
I, I think we've, we've really covered this pretty well, and I think that, uh. I think the changes that have been made, the presentation that's been done, that's been right on, uh, I, I. Comment everywhere on the profession of the, of the application. Uh, I think the cupola does add to, uh, a little class to the building, uh, but it's not something that you see all the time. And I think the, uh, carry-on top is the, uh, osprey, so, uh, I like it.
You can tell us if you'd like to switch his face.
I wanna thank the applicant for making all the changes that we had discussed in the last meetings, it's made our job quite a bit easier, um. This go around, and I'm fully in support of that, and I'm looking forward to that.
I look, I, I think this is the best of Fairhaven, I'm just so excited that we found, um, someone that wanted to use this building as it is. Um, I don't think that, um, that you can do this just anywhere, and I think that the community is really fortunate. Um, to have the applicant and his partner, uh, to be able to figure this out. Um, I think when we build off the sixty-eight resolution, we can't go wrong, I think we're making it better, and I think that that's, I think that that's really good. Um, I usually wait until the end, I hope that I didn't step on anybody, no, no, nothing that's.
No, no, I, I already agree with Dr. Lawfer, um, testimony at the last two meetings. It's a good plan, I agree with the chairman, it's a good use, uh, recognize. You know, a building that's been in the area for six, fifty-six years. Being put to good use and heard from the neighbors, and they all seem to be very positive, so.
Almost sounded like a motion, Mr. Ridgeblacks.
Yeah.
Yeah, decision.
I agree with everything that's said, uh, the cupola and. I mean, I, well, didn't feel wrong with the other, but that's, threw that out there. The one thing though, that one of the neighbors brought up is, can we do something to maybe look at that edge that obstructs?
Yeah, um, so. So the side triangle issue there, uh, Jordan, wha- what can you tell us about the existing condition versus the proposed condition, and whether or not maybe that's already addressed?
Like, first of all, I think that that would be a county issue, but it sounds like they probably didn't look at it at all.
Are those new hedges going in, or are they? It, this is depicting existing hedges that it is.
There's a couple of evergreen shrubs right at your corner, and they're just a little too tall now.
They're coming down, yeah.
Chairman, there's typically, board members, typically a property maintenance code in town, and so we'll make sure that the bushes, you know, meet that property maintenance code.
I'm sure one day the thing is done and it's beautiful, you're not gonna leave over.
No, no, out of, out of an abundance of caution, just looking at the site, it appears as though that bush. At the northeast corner, if I've got my, uh, geometry right, is out of the site triangle easement.
It, it might be.
As depicted on the site plan, but all I ask Mr. Bitcher to check with the county, uh, planning department to make sure that any requirement the county has with regard to. Where is site triangle easement at County Highway and Smith Street is that.
Yeah, I think that, because site triangle easement's gonna have a maximum height, thirty-six inches or something like that, and so I think we just slide in that, that it'll meet those standards.
Well, correct, and just, just because it is a county road doesn't mean that the court can have the official look at it also. Like the media or the county engineer, county engineer, I think that's.
We, we want it to be safe condition, right?
Yeah. Okay. Any further? Anyone have a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion if we approve. Agentals stated this evening. Site long relief.
Conditioned upon, uh, confirming. The height of the edges on the, for the site triangle and using those standards, the applicants also agreed. On, well, based upon the testimony, revised lighting. We're going to have to fashion some light with regard to water moving out of the driveway on Smith. So that in the future, in the event that there is, you know, a little bit of material, material, that basically if there's going to be significant work done. At that driveway area, that the applicant will reason to explore ways in which to mitigate water coming off the site.
I think there's, I think there's three specific things, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what I think they are. The first one was with regard to the lighting, and it relates to maintaining the lights, um, in the condition that they're installed. Uh, I just think that the resolution should have the condition make it clear that to the extent that they get out of whack, that they're gonna be reconciled. That's in case a resident called and says, hey, it's pointing into my house, there'll be some teeth to be able to ask somebody to go out and do that. The second thing related specifically to the exiting of water to Smith Street, and so to be, what, what I have proposed. Is that the condition be that if it is observed by the borough engineer, um, that there is water exiting the parking area to Smith Street. Um, that there be a condition inside of the resolution, um, that the applicant could be asked to install a barrier of some sort. Along Smith Street entrance so as to prevent water from exiting in that direction. Um, exactly how that would be done would be subject to the borough engineer at that time. Um, but the idea would be, for example, something along the lines of a, a, a speed bump or an asphalt barrier, which would prevent the water from coming in. And then the last thing was, in the event that in the future, um, there is a replacement of the parking area. Uh, which created an opportunity to improve the drainage onsite through underground detention. Um, that that be explored and subject to the feasibility of that, um, as reviewed by the borough engineer. Um, that that be a, um, a condition of proceeding, uh, with a replacement, uh, of the parking area at some point in the future. And, and, and you can put in as a, for example, um, the suggestion of grid leaders be directed into that underground detention line, when sane became possible.
The other conditions that you have? Relocation, what is the new lighting, people up?
No lighting in the cupola, right?
Mr. Chair, do you wanna add that, um, the building lights will be in accordance with the exhibit that was presented tonight? And, uh, in addition with a note, that there's two parts to it, it's a, the, the. Instead of the building lights, will they be turned off one hour after close, and then also specify it's eight P M to five A M?
Uh, yes, I'd definitely do that, and the other thing I just remembered is that the, uh, the sign for tenant two would trap the occupancy by tenant twos. And be removed, no option in signing square footage, but, but the removal of the, um, advertising identification of the seventh tenant.
And the main sign would not be subject to the, the auto.
Correct, yeah.
Sign and flag, sign and flag.
Yep.
Should be hours again?
So, there's two parts, it said one hour after close, and it also says eight P M to five A M.
There's two different, like, I think one of them is the business lights and one is the outdoor lighting.
Well, let's get clarification on what it intended, and then let's just make sure it's called out in the resolution.
I think that works as proposed, but the, the business hours might change.
So, so I, so I think what, what it sounds like they've offered is that the, the lights, the exterior lighting should remain on for so long as they are open, plus one hour. Right?
Yeah.
And that the signage lighting and flagpole lighting would be permitted to remain on at all times.
And, and one hour prior to opening, because they open early.
Okay. Why? I, I guess.
If you ever go up and work out, so. I've never done.
Yeah, I don't, really need an hour on either side of that?
Well, typically for safety, I mean, most, most, commercial buildings are lit an hour before they open.
They are.
Especially in the winter, I have the staff maybe coming in before they.
You know, not, not so much now, but especially in the winter. Okay. Anything else, miss anything?
Yeah.
And we're good with chicken, right? Yeah, osprey.
Osprey. Sea chicken.
I, I'm gonna second Mr. Ridgeway's excellently, excellently articulated motion.
And thank you for the.
Ready for a roll call? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Someone could, Ms. Reynolds, someone could take. Someone could take exhibit twenty-six that we now have, and give that to me.
Will do.
Proposal for a comfort rate.
I don't need the board, just need.
Um, Chuck, can we just do a quick roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Al's not here.
Here he is.
I'm here.
Party at the kids' games here.
Roll call, you ready, please? Here. Here. Yep, here, 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 here. All right, we're ready for the ravine application. Now, if anyone's gonna testify in this matter, please stand safely sworn. So I'm swear a testimony, if one board can hear it, it's all the truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
What I'd like to hear is before you start to, before you start your testimony, if you're going to testify, you state your name to the record spelling your last name. If you, if you would like, like to mark some exhibits. Did you say that someone's in the restroom still?
No way.
So you're not ready to go yet?
Uh, yeah, something about in a second.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, let's, let's do the preliminaries, well, let's make sure we don't do anything important.
Yeah, we'll, we'll swear.
Mark some exhibits. Um, A one is the zoning board application and guidelines, dated January, I think you can sit down. January seventeen, twenty, twenty-four, completed land use development checklist consisting of eleven pages. Uh, A two, A three is the list of variances, A four is the list of waivers, A five, the reasons why variances could be approved. Eight six, zoning office denial order dated, uh, December fourteen, twenty twenty-three. There are, A seven is, uh, five images of sites written about the property. A eight is the survey aired by Richland Ufo Associates, dated, it was revised to June fifteen. A nine is the science sealed, uh, architectural plans, kind of ravine residence compared by size and sign and development. Need to, I believe they were updated to May third, revised May third, three sheets, seeing the zone chart, key knock elevations. Four planets out of the floor area. Then we have A ten, it's an email correspondence of May sixth, twenty twenty-four, outlining the latest, those changes. Uh, the signature of official size. There's also ZB one, which CME Engineering Report, March eighth, twenty twenty-four, all the signature of Rizzo. Uh, ZB two, second report dated May eighth, then with the C, CME Engineering with signature Rizzo. Are there any other exhibits that I haven't set forth on this record?
Yes, there's a couple of Jason photos that the applicant took, um.
These are in addition to the photos we've already marked as A, A seven, those were five images.
Yes.
These are additional.
Yes, so these are photos of surrounding resident properties like that.
Okay, then, how many pictures, how many images? Four images, mark that, A eleven, four images. Has that been already submitted to the board before the state? Around the properties. Approximately, when were the images, when was the taken?
They were very recent photos this year, this is.
Like the last mall?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just a second, you saw me, you saw me swear that, you saw me swear this testimony, you did the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Now we blew that, I already blew the first part of my instruction, because you could speak. I just want you to spell your last name, whoops, in the rapid state, spell your last name, whoops, they laugh. Thank you, any other exhibits, we're up to A line, ZB two.
Thanks, Doc.
Alright, if you find them, let me know, we'll watch them, if you want those to be seen by the board, let me know when you want them to be seen by the board. Mr. Shisaius, you're, um, you're here as a lawyer? We, uh, the board has previously, previously approved your credentials, why don't you quickly tell us your credentials, please, and we'll, um, and we'll consider you as an expert architect.
So, yeah, a licensed architect and landscape architect in the state of New Jersey.
And have you ever been qualified as an expert by this board or any other board we work there?
Yes, yep, and I'll be tapped.
Uh, any questions about Mr. Shisaius's qualifications? Very good, Mr. Shisaius, I know that your, your client is here, and we're gonna talk about this in total. But one of the things I wanna make sure that we get right up front is an understanding of what variances triggered by your applications, the board understands what.
Can I just go through the checklists, uh, checklists waivers that are being requested? There are five, um, these are standard, and they're all, most part not applicable, so I don't take any exceptions to them. Um, it is ownership disclosure statement, um, again, not applicable in this case. Uh, Monmouth County Planning Board application, Free Old S C D application, Monmouth County Health Department application. And then all easements, covenants, and de restrictions. And then all easements, covenants, and de restrictions. Which, if you know, is that not what the boss tells you?
So the interior check recommendations, we made the checklist conditions. Any board members have any questions in regard to those, uh, those waivers? Okay, received.
Uh the two var, yeah, so the variances, there's two variances of, one is the minimum side door setback. Seven feet's required, five point nine is existing, five point nine is proposed. So that, that would be an exacerbation of existing variance, so increase. Uh but we're gonna keep the step, we're proposing to keep the setback as it is. The other is the uh front yard driveway coverage, uh twenty-five percent is permitted. Uh I calculated existing just under that at twenty-four point four and proposed is thirty-seven point five percent.
It's on the, some of the table. Are we looking at the C M report?
Yeah, it must not be on C M.
They placed theirs.
So, so before we, before we get started on, on how you laid it out, can you just help us understand um how we decided that this setback is, is gonna remain? And can you help us understand what's existing, what's exacerbating based on your elevations? I want you to do the whole dog and bone show, but let's at least get focused on that so we know what we're looking at.
So, so just be a little more specific is what you're asking.
I, I'm, I'm interested in, in. To the extent that you've decided that you're coming through the zoning board, you've decided that you really need this.
Yeah.
I wanna understand how much of this existing setback exists right now? How are you exacerbating it, to what extent? Maybe you could even look at that elevation?
Yeah.
And then help us understand from the thought process as to, you know, why that's important.
Sure, yeah. So I'll, I'll look at the uh site plan first and I'll really get to the interesting. The setback issue is on the right side. Uh five point nine, so one point one feet, it is existing, uh, we are over the minimum side yard. Uh we are proposing a second floor addition, uh I'll talk more about that later. So this second story addition would be encroaching within that by lining up with the existing wall. Which generally makes sense from an architectural and a construction standpoint. Uh there would also be a horizontal uh expansion proposed of a one-story rear addition. And an open cover front porch that would match that setback. So that is the, that is the five point nine. I think um from a practical level and aesthetic level, I think the uh second story addition makes sense to line it up. And given that it's only one point one feet, which is probably difficult to discern in reality. Uh I, I think that would really help out both uh for the applicant, also I don't, I don't see that it's a, a net benefit to bump that in one point one. Uh I, I do think the rear's, the rear one-story addition, if, if that was an issue, could bump in without any, any significant detriment to the design. The front porch, I, I had to do that in the past where you have to bump in generally. It doesn't look as good if it's lined up. Uh again, if, if that needed a bump in one point one, that could. But I, I think from an aesthetic standpoint, that would make sense to keep that lined up. So that is the minimum side yard setback variance, again, seven feet's required, five nine is existing, five nine's proposed to be expanded. Uh the second uh variant is proposed is the front yard driveway coverage. And that is largely driven by uh, we, we'd like to do a two-car attached garage. That alone, based on a seventy-five foot lot, which would be a twenty-five percentage of the max. That gives you an eighteen point five foot width to work with, which generally uh is difficult to achieve with a two-car garage. If you were to do a combined uh combined garage door at sixteen feet, you could just get within there. Um but two-car double-wide garage doors generally don't look as nice as single doors. Uh then the main issue with that, and something I think is. Definitely needs to be discussed tonight, is. We need Fairhaven uh we need for uh the in-house bedrooms, which is four bedrooms, uh three parking spaces. The spaces only count. Uh as far as my understanding, it would be beyond the front yard setback. The front yard setback is not just the zoning setback, but in, in past terms with Mister Murelay. His interpretation is that beyond the actual front facade of the building. So in order to do that, the two-car garage that takes care of two and the three, the third space proposed is a flare now of the driveway. To make it functional, but also not to add any more driveway coverage, we try to somewhat minimize that, but provide that third space. Which would be surface, open-air parking on the left side of the house.
And how much is that?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, how much does that open air spot increase the coverage of the driveway on the? On the property?
I would say, if we're, we're at twenty-two, I think twenty-two divided by seventy-five, and then what would be the balance of that is?
Can you, um, be your question?
What I was asking is basically if you lined the driveway up straight with the garage, and you didn't have that flare to accommodate what he's saying is the.
So nothing beyond, nothing behind the garage, it's just saying the actual.
And the flare as well, like if it was just a straight on to.
So, so if, so I have this designed at twenty-two, which is driven by going to the, going to the left and right side of the. Garage doors here.
Right.
Uh which I, I think we, we could probably tighten this up a little bit, but if you go to that, that's twenty-two. If you take that divided by seventy-five, that gives us about twenty-nine percent. So thirty-seven point five, so figure somewhere around eight percent of that.
Well, it's a signi, it's a significant.
Yes.
Okay.
My, my question about it is. Is there? Does the applicant feel that there's a need? For that space on the side of the garage? Or are they just trying to accommodate the third space? And have they considered requesting a waiver, parking waiver for that third?
Yeah.
Parking space as opposed to going significantly over the percentage of.
Yes.
Imperious surface and.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we, we've discussed that, it's, it seemed to us that i- it's gonna trigger a variance either way, if, if it. If we try to reduce the flare and take out the third space, then we're in a condition where we're technically providing two spaces beyond the front.
Functionally, though, you're using it anyway, right? I saw on the pictures and I, I passed by your house all the time, I saw, I mean, you park and drive it like a normal.
Right. I, I mean, you were here for. Previous applications and part of previous applications and considering. I, I, I don't know if you got a sense of.
Yeah.
How the board feels about stormwater management and.
Yeah.
And lot cover and impervious surface.
Yeah.
Coverage. Do you feel it? That makes more sense than asking for a waiver.
I think.
Uh and, and that's really up to you.
Yeah, what we, we have discussed.
Discussing.
Way. Uh they would prefer to have that third space, and part of what we're gonna talk about as to why is, given that it's a chance road. Not that this is a busy road, but I know in the several times we've met, just back and out there sometimes with waiting. So what they're hoping to do, they are planning on actually using the garage, that's why it's attached, is that it would reduce the amount of times you would have to car jockey. Uh but I think to answer your question, as we've talked about, is. If, if it's more important to have or reduce coverage, both from stormwater and maybe aesthetics. Uh that's not something that they wouldn't, they're open to doing that.
I know I'm not the only one, but I, I back on the river road, that one foot wide driveway.
Yeah.
I'm sure that there are others who make similar circumstances, so. You know?
Yeah.
You, you gotta have twenty or twenty-two feet to, to. To pull on the hens, uh, uh.
Yeah.
Don't you have a, don't you have an area there where you can back out anyway? Where you can back in on, on the existing driveway?
So right now, uh, it's not underlaid on the proposed uh site plan. It is a, seems to be, well, yeah, roughly a single uh wide curb cut that. Flares out as you get to the house, I, I'm, I think it's quite. Check this, it doesn't seem.
It looks like a left extension on the existing driveway.
Yes.
Where you can back into.
And that's, that's when I've been there.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, uh, like, if, if it's preferred by the board, I mean, just to keep that left bank that's currently existing and not do the extension all the way out. If that's what makes the board happy, I mean, that's more.
What's the, oh, what's the math look like on that with the driveway coverage, if you keep that left bank?
Uh.
Have that dotted line.
By your feet, and are you saying like? Coming to like a single wide curb cut?
Uh, yeah, what I'm saying is a driveway that's. The length, the sides of it are.
I think you mean the garage width.
Yeah, with the.
Yeah, with the.
And still keep the flare. I think that's, I have that spot, let me just double track it, ten by twenty, so.
Not too much, isn't it?
You're ten by pretty, two hundred divided by, it's, it's gonna figure it's probably somewhere around two percent.
Okay, let's, let's, let's talk one at a time. You guys have anything interesting over there that you wanna share with us?
Yeah, Mister.
Yeah, you know, there, there's a beautiful tree. Uh just to the. Just to the west of that little cutout in the driveway.
Yeah.
Are you planning on removing that?
That would have to be removed, yes.
You know, that, that's, that's a magnificent tree. And there has to be a way, there has to be a way to save that tree. I understand that if there's a, there's a maple tree in front of the house. Uh a Japanese maple that, that probably has to be removed to do your porch.
Ee-hi.
But I can, I, I really can't see removing that beautiful tree that's in front of the house. And uh. And you can still probably save that tree and expand the driveway and keep that back out area. Uh so that you don't have to pull out, uh back out onto River Road. That tree, that, that you, you.
Are you suggesting a driveway width? Driveway width to the garage and then keep that pump out to the left?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, you're still losing the two smaller trees directly in front of the house itself.
You are, you are, but, but those trees are.
I know, but I don't know.
They're nowhere near as, as nice.
Maybe a specimen tree, I don't know, size-wise.
One of those trees is also bad, so I would like to.
And I believe on the. Tree on the right of the house is dead. Okay, but the, the tree to the uh, uh, the, the big beautiful tree. You could carve out a little area of uh, of green there. Belly out enough to get to your garage and still save that tree.
That's what I would recommend.
Which is gonna help it run off as well, that tree sucks up a lot.
The proposed garage does bump out closer to the southern property lines, and that tree would be directly in front of the garage.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not exactly sure it's as simple as we're suggesting. Uh Mister Shisai, is those, is the black dot you just put on the plan, the property location of that tree?
Yeah. So. I, I'm processing, uh, I think a couple of concerns I have, uh, and it may be a way to possibly. Achieve that. One is. If, if this garage were to be built, it would definitely impact the roof system somewhat, given that that driveway is there, it, it, the roofs. I don't, I don't know the exact age of everything or when the, when the driveway was built. But I gotta imagine any roots under that driveway are already not really performing for the tree. Uh but I would agree if we were to remove the left side and do a carve-out, that would certainly, that would certainly improve the likelihood of survival for sure. I think at that point. What I'd have to look at, I'm measuring, if we were to do a double-wide garage door, which typically a single-wide today is nine feet. Times two is eighteen, but if you do a double-wide, not that it's aesthetically is nice, but maybe to save the tree as well worth it. Would be a sixteen-foot door, and we have that banked to the side and almost follow the line that's there right now. Uh, and, and one thing I just wanted, so everyone understand why the garage is like it is. Is we're actually keeping the foundation around the perimeter, so it's not banked into that existing foundation. That's why, uh, that's. The, the location of the garage for a two-car garage is somewhat inflexible, but that's why that's actually there. But I, I think. Think we'd have to look at it, but if we were to do a combined two-car garage door. We wouldn't be able to provide that third space, which maybe is not aspect of the building thinking. We could probably work around that.
I don't know if we can say for certain, though, that the trunk and the garage would actually reach out and touch the house now.
I feel, in my experience, a lot of ti, I mean, I, I think because that's a one-story portion as opposed to the two beyond. I think they'd be able to work around and trim the tree. I find a lot of times what happens in this sorts of situations is. The tree survives and then five years down the road, it, it may decline, but um. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you guys understand what I'm suggesting, if, if that's something that's really important, which sounds like it is.
Let's slow it down a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, um, tell me the depth of the garage as you're proposing.
It's twenty-four by twenty-four?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know there's a little L, but is it twenty-four to that gate or twenty-four to the?
Twenty-four, um, I'm sorry, where did that L cut?
I don't know, I'm just looking at the uh, at the plan, is it?
Oh, on the side.
It's, it's twenty-five that.
That's the foundation.
Long extended, it's about twenty-one.
Oh, that's fine, okay, fine. I see it now, I appreciate it.
But you're going a full twenty-four feet deep in the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
In order to provide some utility on the back, also given that they don't have a basement due to the five-water table. Uh we were going, we're planning on putting some utilities along the back.
Yeah, the, the more stuff you put in that garage, the less usable it's gonna be, and that's the reason I'm asking. Because to the extent that it's not really gonna be a useful two-car garage, it's creating a lot of problems. Um what about mitigation of storm damage? Is there a proposal as part of this plan to mitigate stormwater uh with regard to the new um interdices?
No, there's not, whatever, if, if they were in some town when we went for review in front of, uh, I, I don't know if it's Mister Rizzo or the borough engineer. If there was any sort of requirements, we'd certainly meet those. I think if the board is, has been asking for kind of over and above. As part of these receivers, I would think would be open to it.
Well, to the extent that you're asking for more impervious coverage in the front than what's permitted.
Yeah.
I think that the board has been looking at what's being proposed by way of mitigation.
Gotcha.
You're gonna be there, you're gonna have heavy equipment, adding a dry well, and, and presenting to the board what you'll be offsetting. It's gonna be helpful to you in terms of the board understanding some of the pros and cons of what you're putting on the table. Uh so that was the reason that I asked.
Okay.
I think you should help us understand how the remodeling of the existing structure is coming together.
Yes.
So people understand what you're working around.
Yes.
Um and so I appreciate you starting with the hard stuff.
Okay.
Um we'll talk about it pretty soon.
Okay, so existing right now is an existing one-story structure. Uh there are some uh additions that have been added on in the past, or the kind of child construction, and they have those, you know, these. Subpar insulation, those are proposed, we just get the knowledge. Um right now, the house, I would say, is a three-bed, two-bath. Uh it, it's only, I think, about there, it's about sixteen hundred seventy square feet. But that also means uh some of the rear additions that have been removed. Uh the, the house is a clay tile structure. Uh that's why they have a thick exterior wall.
I'm sorry, it's a what?
Clay tile structure.
Clay tile.
Yeah, it's kinda like makes some reason, whatever, period.
Okay.
Uh it's actually really strong, it's just hard to work around. So in speaking with the contractor, who actually, we, we did the same thing at his house on Park Road in Fairhaven. Uh so he, he's familiar with the process of how to work with this. But basically, he suggested from a cost perspective to maintain what we could of it instead of demo the whole thing down. So effectively, we'd be gutting the interior of the house, maintaining a pretty significant percentage of the exterior clay tile wall. And building, doing a small addition out the back for a living room, and then building up off of that. Above would be a wood structure. Traditional wood structure uh residents. Um so that's the existing condition, there is a covered porch between the demo, the front side will stay roughly the same.
And aesthetically, as I'm looking at the, the plan, uh, the site plan, it looks as though the front of your proposed porch. Is gonna line up with the front of the existing covered porch, or does it extend further towards street?
Uh it extends, I think, a foot or two further, just to make it a little more usable.
And what are your setbacks to both the garage and the proposed porch?
The garage is thirty point seven. Porch is. Porch is about thirty-six feet. So it's about thirty, it's thirty point seven to the garage facade and thirty-six to the open side covered porch.
And the minimum front yard is thirty?
Thirty. Um so. The first ward, the proposal is to then do a two-car attached garage. Uh you would walk in, foyer, stairs, open up. Uh flex room off the front. Uh a bath, full bath, mudroom that would lead in from the garage, so it's kinda like this, kinda an utility zone here. Uh then off the side, that's currently the master bedroom, dining, kitchen, living room. This is the one-story rear addition. Uh we had originally proposed a open. Uh, we had originally proposed a open deck and patio, but the revised plans were including a, uh, just putting a roof over this. As a lot of people have to do. The, and this is the portion that was mentioned is approaching, if we, if the boards all fit, I think that could bump in. The, the one point one would be, if it made a difference. Um, the second floor is to provide four bed, three bath. The, uh, stairwell would stop here or get to the top here. There'd be a hallway as well as a loop up to a attic, which would be habitable, but doesn't, doesn't add to the habitable floor area. Uh, habitation. On the left side of the house is a master suite, the right side is the three kids beds, one's a common bath, one's a non suite. And then the, uh, attic plan is really just a result of what's left over in the roof frame. And part of the concept of the attic plan was that, given that it doesn't have a basement, it's kind of a pseudo basement alternative. I don't think it's as functional, but it at least gives them some extra space for kids or stuff like that.
That's why we did it. What's the, what's the ridge height on the house as you're proposing?
The, the ridge height is, I think we maxed that, it's just, it's pretty much thirty, thirty at max, thirty max. Yeah, from the average grade. The attic windows that are. You know, center of the house, they're hidden, see them, man, those three. Yeah, that's right, those should be there, yeah, those would be. Those would be right there, that's correct, yeah, thank you.
What's your, what's your, uh, maximum ceiling height in the attic space?
Attic, uh, we've been totally finalized, whether we brought it to seven or just go up to where the collar ties would fit.
Okay.
Um, but if we were gonna go up to the collar ties. And I don't think it affects the zoning definition, I would estimate that would be. Actually puts it right around, yeah, right around, uh. I would say probably about eight feet to the collar ties.
And so as you showed the footprint of the attic space, the, the perimeter walls, that's come down to zero?
This here is a dormer that gives a little more head rebite from the stairs required by code, uh, to maybe grass code. Um, these are knee wall heights called in, so it'd be zero or, or even less than zero once you get to the dash line. But this is a knee wall height at about three and a half feet. Um, the knee wall heights on, it's kinda hard to explain, but. If these, these gables that come out, those would be about three and a half feet. And then this, I think, is also three and a half across. And again, what happens here is this dormer at the front, shed dormer. Also is, you know, enough clearance head height for the stairwell right there. Uh, these end are all gable ends, so those go up with the feet. So no, I, I would say none of these go down to zero, they're, they're bumped in from the outside world.
Mr. Shisai, can you just confirm for the record that the attic won't be used as a bedroom, bathroom, or kitchen?
No.
And you've done the calculation, um, and your attic. Area at seven feet or greater is less than one third of the floor below it? In which case you're considered a half story and don't count towards floor area.
Yes, it was about twenty-five percent versus the one third.
Yeah, the, the, the representation is that it conforms to the, um, to the attic as defined.
A half story. And that's also building code, if you don't encounter a story, it triggers another level of fire that can occur. So that's why generally you want to do that. In the kitchen zone.
So can you go back to the, um, to the elevation and show us the short side?
Short side, uh, like the left side?
Uh, yeah, uh, I guess it's the north side, right? The one that, that, that needs setback variance?
Oh, yes, right here. So, yes, this would be, this would be. Basically the existing structure that we're adding up onto. So that would be a gable end here, gable turn toward, uh, toward hands. This would be the open side of front porch. And this is the proposed addition at the back, one story.
Do you have a layover of the existing, um. Elevation against the proposed? Does it show any plans that way?
Not on, um. Kinda estimate what that would be. It's a generally a hit wood structure, so. Uh, I think that's where to do it. I think from, from the front, the roof generally goes something like this. So wherever it terminates at eight feet, even though we're, we're proposing to add one foot to the ceiling height. It terminates at eight feet and then goes away from the neighboring residence. And then from, from this perspective, the roof line, the, uh, the eve, we start here and then we see back as kept wood floor.
If you're changing my first floor ceiling height, you're removing all the first floor frame, right?
No, you can build up off that.
Yeah?
Yeah. Now, apparently the, the actual cost, I would think, kinda what you're thinking is just demo, but when we're, uh, speaking with the contractor, he said. If we can maintain that, for whatever reason, that add, that saves significantly to the cost. I would've thought just take it down the foundation itself, but.
That's be, it was because it was blocked, they said they would just add another layer of block.
Yeah, so you, you're right, we would add one foot of block on the first floor and then convert to all wood exterior to the.
Based on, well, that's the tile, whatever.
The clay tile, yeah.
Mr. Shisai, it's the second floor in that. In that right side elevation, what's the front room there? I'm just thinking, on, once we go up, and I know it's only a foot in, but there's a lot of wall space there that we're now putting into the setback. What, is there an option to put another window there somewhere, just to give it a little bit of open?
Yeah, I, I think we could. The only reason I had not was just because of furniture layout, but, uh, I think in this case, it would make. Based on what you're saying, I think that would be an improvement. We could put two small windows, one over each side where the nightstands were doing a little bit. If that was how they would furnish it.
We could do like a transit window on the front, tie it up.
That's a.
Bring some light, without something to. Yeah, right.
Not, the, the.
Not committing some of that white wall, that space that you need.
Yeah, I, I have the same impression, by the way, when, when you're, when you're that close to the, to the lot line, it, it, it just, it just feels a little. Start, and I'm wondering how it can be dressed up in order to sort of mitigate, you know, um, how close it feels.
I thought the same on the first floor, but I think that's the kitchen, right?
First floor.
Yeah.
Yes, we have one, that's a single window there.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping to do, but if we could do something on the second floor.
Yeah, so those, yeah, those would be approximately. Something like that.
I think the addition of the second of those additional windows would improve the appearance of that. But I, I would also note that it's adjacent to the, it's adjacent to the neighbor's driveway. So that it, it looks like there's a pretty good area there, uh, that's unflattered.
That's where their, their couch is set back from, yeah.
So your second story really holds the perimeter of the first story, right? So you didn't have an option to move that box. More central to the lot and move it away from the property, the, the whole thing or just the second floor addition? Just the second floor.
I think what you're saying is move, move, move it significantly, not just one point one feet or whatever, move the whole thing over. Uh, generally.
Well, you, you're, you're building all there, it's not as if you have a single story area where you could've moved it that way over, you know? It, it seems to me, you, you're utilizing the entirety of the footprint.
We, we are, in, in fact, we're even overlapping just a little bit to the garage below here, but yeah, you're right, the second floor is. The whole thing plus a couple of feet out, uh, at this corner, but yes, that's correct.
Could you advise the board? I see that to the northern side, your sideline yard line, not long. You, you depict a driveway there, from the images that I see from C M E's report, further back. How far is that garage that seemed to be associated with that kind of vision?
With the neighbor on the right side?
Yeah, the neighbor on the right, basically the front, neighbor on the right side, how far from that bottom line is that to that garage?
I don't, do you guys have a sense? Um. From our lot, uh. We're talking about, I think, we're talking about up here, right?
Yeah, it's, their, their driveways like here, their garage is like over here.
So it kinda like, it's a little bit past where your house currently ends?
Oh, yeah.
So, and so it falls in a little bit, that's new.
Yeah, their garage.
So probably five, six, two. So right things that, probably comparable five, six, seven feet off.
Yeah, so there's their garage.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of area.
It might be a little further than that.
But, but, but what's the house next door? To the extent that you're, that you're putting stock in the idea that they're not there, is that subject to be an elegant or is it a good house?
Oh, yeah, that house is over here.
Yeah, what does that look like?
But, but what's the house next door? Is that one of the pictures that you have?
It's one of the photos, uh, that was, I, I think Mr. Rizzo there taking this photo, but yes, it's on, it will be, that they.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like a big shed dorm on the front.
Hey, with the shed dorm on.
Yeah. Brick fireplace on the other side of the, uh.
Yeah.
On the other side of the driveway. That doesn't look cramped over there.
No, I think, I think the closest structure is the garage.
Right, right. Uh, so, so my sensitivity is to doing the full thirty foot, that close to the property line and it looking stark. So the first question is that you talked about a masonry structure on the first floor, timber construction on the second. You've got a consistent siding material that you're using on both floors?
Yes.
You're going over the masonry?
Yeah.
I feel like I want that side because it is so presented to the neighbor to look more, I, I, to, to look.
Scale it down.
Well, it, it isn't, I, I, your massing is okay, you're only at thirty feet. You've got some flexibility with regard to that rear addition and you've got some flexibility with regard to the porch. But you've got a full thirty foot, you, you're going, that's gonna be significant change from what they're now. You said, you, you've got your roof back going back the other way. I, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way to break it or add an aesthetic improvement on that side to soften the, 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 the feel of that as a big tall wall.
Um, what if, what if you use some landscaping in between the windows on the bottom floor?
Problem with landscaping is they can go in today and they can be cut down tomorrow.
Well, like my house, for example, is on top of the neighbor, right? And we have a whole bunch of, we have like a bunch of, um.
Arborwood?
No, they're not arborite, it's, it's a type of holly, it's like a, um. Red beauty or something and it grows big and it's in between the stuff, and my house is on top of my neighbor's house, right? And we have some windows in the gaps, we have some ground cover or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, their house is equally as tall as mine, different situation from yours, but I don't know, maybe that's a cost efficient alternative that doesn't require totally.
Well, I give a little bit strain to the kitchen where it is, you can't really get any more windows on the bottom floor, which is really what they crying out for.
Um, but I, I, I think the windows would help, I think the windows would help, I think you could band it. I think you could put a, you can put a trim piece that goes all the way between the first and the second floor, break it up a little bit. You could actually do some sort of, uh, the roof element or, or something.
So we've done that. A little eyebrow, like a little eyebrow roof or something?
That's what I'm looking at, if there was a way, and, and again, I, I don't know if we're still not lining this wall up or bumping it in a foot, the addition out the back. But maybe if we extended and did a little bit of an exaggerated overhang, could run it across.
That's what I'm talking.
And tie it in and still keep the wall flush.
That's what I'm talking.
To give it like aesthetically a little. Oh, nice.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable way to do it, and, and I.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be extreme cost wise either.
No, I don't think so, but I, I like that approach because I agree to landscaping, I know a lot of times. Boards approve things based on landscaping, but who's maintaining that, who's checking it, so.
I just figured they're probably gonna put it there anyway. Insert.
Mr. Shisai, your proposed one story addition.
Yeah.
Uh, the first floor, uh, how close is that gonna be to the neighbor's garage?
We don't have that on survey, I don't believe, um, but from. I think the garage is roughly here relative, so again, take this.
The neighbor's, the neighbor's garage is, is freestanding.
I think, I think at the minimum, it, it appears that they're at least six, seven feet back from the property line, so. It's four, six, this is five, nine, so it's about twelve. Who struck the structure?
I, I, I think that that is gonna get a little tight, a- and, and I think that when you originally presented it, what you explained was that if you pull it back. The foot, foot and a half, that the function would remain pretty close, and that is an addition, right?
Yes.
Cause one of the things that you would gain if you set that back is that you would start to break up that wall of the house.
Yeah.
And you would soften where you really need to go straight up, and I understand. That is a practical matter, going right up on your existing foundation, there's a lot of efficiency to that. But when you add that addition, if you broke that and just set it back, aesthetically, it's gonna feel very different, and I actually think there'd be a real benefit to that. As you look at that elevation on that side.
Okay.
Anybody else feel?
It would also help with landscaping that, if you bump that part in.
That proposed first story addition, how, how much? What is that, what is that gonna be? I mean, is it?
That's gonna be the main living room and it's gonna be open to the kitchen, so this is kind of more of a break room. Uh, it's gonna be a vaulted ceiling, low vault, it's not gonna count as two stories, I, I ran into that a while back. Um, so yeah, it's gonna be the primary living room.
Is it gonna be not, is it so, it's one point one feet is what you would do, right? Is it gonna be visible on the inside or it's like a weird notch, or it will be concealed in the outfit, envelope of the house?
So for structural purposes, I'm leaving a little return wall here that also serves to end the kitchen, the fridge doors against.
So I'm trying to conceal it anyway.
So I don't think it'd be a major, I don't know if you guys feel they're gonna do it.
And you could slide the whole thing, you wouldn't lose any square feet and you'd still have all the utility in the center of the lot, so everything could just slide that way, right?
My, my perspective is it, it'd be pretty easy to do.
We would be fair able to do, the only thing is we were gonna put like, uh, like a, almost like a built in next to the fireplace. That might jut out a little bit from the, just from the visual standpoint, but I think otherwise.
I, I think we could make that work, right now, that is. Right now, that wall on the living room side, the back, a little over two feet, and normally you do twelve up to eighteen inches. So I, I, that's, I, I think it'd be fine.
I'm fine with that, we, we would make it work.
Well, you know, you could slide the whole addition.
Yeah.
And not on the first floor.
On the first.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree.
Because it's an addition, it should be a zero cost factor, right?
Yeah.
You're just talking about moving it slightly. The aesthetic benefit that you get from the outside, I think, is straight forward. Because as you break up those facade, you're gonna get some advantage. What that does is that softens the request to build up over the area where you get the efficiency of being able to build on the foundation. Um, talk about the front porch, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like that has the same necessity.
That's, that is where this, this I, I agree with how you guys are looking at it. I think the porch, I, I, I think visually would look much better lined up, it doesn't look good when it bumps in. Um, and to your point, just the fact of the scale of it and then it's open sided, I don't think there's any benefit to that.
It actually helps, I mean, it's one of the prettier elements of that side elevation.
And I could probably, if we're, like I was saying, one way to get an eyebrow or move coming across here would be to expand that, but if we're bumping that in. We're probably, we would lose that, but we could pull some sort of detail off the porch across.
Yeah.
By the time it recedes, no one from the street would really notice.
Yeah.
Where that came from.
But the porch would not go further into the setback though, no?
It'd be the same five, four, nine.
Got it.
So I think that, that's a way to do that, and it doesn't, cause you always gotta think words of resolve, but I think by, on that back corner, it's not really.
So isn't there an exception with regard to a roof overhand?
Yeah.
That wouldn't violate acceptance.
Whatever, those two feet.
Two feet, right, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think so.
Can we go back to the driveway?
Yeah.
I, I, I like these ideas, but you, you've got two variances, right? So we talked about the house generally, we've got two variances to talk about, I think we've talked a lot about that side. Let's go back to what we were talking about with regarding the driveway, the function of the two car garage, the, 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 the tree.
So I think, I'll pick up from that suggestion would be. Again, I think, I think some of the initial questions, uh, Mr. Chibette, I think asked a question, is, are, were we doing it solely to meet the three car? Uh, somewhat, but I think when we looked at it, it was preferential, but it, it, it's not something.
I think, I, I think it's only because we can keep the, the current like turn off that only currently exists.
Um, I think you keep that and you lose the third parking space.
Right, if we, yeah, keep this and get rid of this, I think that, that's.
The negative to the, to the previous coverage is, is something that you want to.
Less.
I think if you do that, though, you're gonna have to straighten that flare, cause it looks like it goes off to the left, it'd probably be better if it was. Yeah, you're gonna have to reconfigure it, I don't think you need to.
I, I think a few things I, I would have to look at would be, I think we, we'd have to go to a double bay sixteen foot door, which. I know it's not preferable, but I, my personal opinion, if it's gonna save, possibly save the tree, I think that's pretty good trade off. And then the other thing we have, we, we'd have to basically center that door. And then the other thing we have, we we have to basically center that door almost on the existing driveway. And then I would I would think we would add, I think we would add, build this area and back here. So this would roughly line up with the two car garage, where they would be back to the side.
Totally agree, can I see a picture of the tree, so I I really, I I I like trees, I really do.
Yeah, it's it's gonna it's gonna buncher like.
So moving to, but but the other thing that we gotta remember, right? And cause I've I've had this experience, I'm trying to preserve trees, what happens is that if that root system gets affected by the construction and it gets compacted. You're gonna lose the tree, and as much as it feels good to save it today, boy, the stupidest thing you could have is a house built around a tree that's not dead.
Yeah, the one other thing I'd like to add is the electrical lines currently run through that tree.
So it lights up?
Only in the right habits.
If you put that in this picture, this tree has been. It's been hacked up, so you know, it might be better to remove the tree and replant something.
Which would be happening to this wall.
My other question, well, but as we're near passing around the tree, but with the new garage, obviously this is for storage. And you have the shed back there, what's the uh plan for the shed?
I thought us to get rid of the shed once we. I think, are we, do you know what year that Google Earth is? Because when I was looking at it, that that might not be in that here.
The picture in my bag, it looks different than the picture that that.
I took that this afternoon.
I was skip driving by real slow.
I have seen skip at a progress.
So I gotta, so we've talked about a few trees that are coming out and talked about a tree that we'd like to preserve and we've talked about some of the difficulties. I personally, you know, you can plant a a three or or four inch caliber new maple. In two or three years, those trees are gonna look really, really good. If they offer to put a couple in the front with those trees where they're going, if this tree comes out and we talk about replanting a couple of of nice trees. I think in a few years, we're we're gonna be okay. I gotta say, with regard to the with regard to the front driveway, however, you're still over, even if we do that, you're you're gonna be close to the thirty seven percent. And and I'm thinking. A dry well to offset that would would really help to mitigate that extra lot coverage. Because you have the seventy five foot wide lot, it's it's better than a than than a fifty in terms of what you're working with, it's not all blacktop. Um but I feel like offsetting with um with leaders that are gonna go underground, you're gonna be building in the back. You can you can do a dry well, you're gonna have the machines there, it just feels like that would be a good offset, the way you're saying, keep the side spot. Um actually, I I I'm indifferent as to whether or not the side spot should remain. Because I think by the time you do that notch out, you're gonna be really close to the thirty seven percent anyway. If it is eventually used, it's useful, you can't park in this area on hands. Um and so we need to be thinking forward, right? So the kids eventually go from here to. To I'm just have one ready to drive and it's scary, but there's gotta be a place, so. Um if you think you're gonna use it and you're gonna offset it, and in the end, it's got the function of the turnaround, I don't feel strongly.
In the end, we're looking at this as our forever home and we were third, we were the second child in the way, we had thoughts of having a third. I, at some point in our life, we will likely have a third car and having. That small turnoff will give us the ability to be able to pull two out in the garage and one there, so it's no, no car being blocked in.
I think the dry well would address it, and I know Al said it earlier. You know, newer construction in general, they abide by that stuff, so it wouldn't be too hard, you do have a wide lot, you are gonna be doing a ton of work on it anyway, it's not overly. It's not overly costly, even though it's not this decision that we base it on, but.
The only thing I don't know, I know Mr. Fisher talked about this in the last meeting, I I do know there's a high water table, we don't have a soil board. I don't, you guys may be more familiar with with the soils like.
So you have to confirm it, obviously.
I, yeah, I wouldn't wanna have them do it and it doesn't.
So you'd have to prove that it doesn't, prove that it's a high water table or soils that don't. Um I know I've done this before, if it doesn't, then.
The only challenge of that is it doesn't, if it doesn't, right, you take out the tree, which helps, and you got a lot of driveway and more mass on the property.
If 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 a soil board was performed and it showed that parking doesn't help, right? We would consult with an engineer, then the question would be, would that change how the board is thinking about the driveway? Don't know where that.
I I think the answer is yes, I think if we knew that you could make the the runoff condition on the property better. Notwithstanding the fact that you're over on coverage in the front, it makes it easier. I'm not saying that we can't figure something out, if you can't do it, but my, what I just cavalierly said with regard to the parking area changes a little bit. To the extent that you don't have it, why, because then then we're not even at the thirty seven percent, we're adding more impervious as we go backwards. Um and so it's it's an impact. One lot at a time.
I think if it didn't work, the dry well didn't work, I would be supportive of the driveway that matches the width of the garage and take off that corner piece, and I think that's close enough. If you lose the functionality, but you will have, like everyone in town, you're gonna have runoff problems and it's gonna be, you're gonna have a soupy yard and.
And I I think.
It's gonna be worse than you think.
I think their yard generally slumps to the dimensions, right? Have you guys ever noticed?
Uh not on the front.
So I think it all goes in the system, storm system somehow, I guess.
Yeah, when we've, yeah, it does actually, I we know it does, cause we've pumped water out of the crawl space into like around here. It tends to just flow right into the driveway, like right down the drive.
How deep is your crawl now?
I was down there briefly, I would say the clear height would be somewhere around, maybe around the height of this table, thirty inches, thirty six inches.
You get standing, you said there's no water kind of. But do you get standing water in your yard?
Uh to only like the the like the couple of major storms that happen, um otherwise, no.
Yeah, we're all that.
Does your crawl get one?
Doing major storms, it does, uh but we're we're planning on really like. Refinishing though, cause currently it's.
Again, speak to everyone else, but I think I would be supportive of the with matching the house if you put into it, the dry well would be a huge improvement. Cause my house is on slab and it's, the water issue is, we have a higher water table as well.
So you were saying if a dry well is something that can actually be done.
Keep a little turn off as is, if not, maybe you keep it with.
I'm looking at the side elevation and there's this projection off of the front of the porch, is that the existing? Oh, that's the garage.
That's beyond, yeah, this garage bumped out.
Just going back, cause I'm looking at the front elevation, when you were talking about going over a single garage, don't do that, it looks like.
No, I I think that's right, I think the house is attractive from the front and I think that your dormer situation for the stairway is a little creative. But I think it actually, I think it actually works, but I think the two garage doors is important, I think it really helps.
A single door there would look, look all, it would look like floor.
And and I like the balance. The front porch and the columns look really good. So so on the left elevation, what what are you showing, what what is that?
So. Dash line represents, so the dormers again, stairwell, which is a little challenging, the right side is the garage. We did a hip roof, we played around with some different options, but the hip roof minimized the 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 visual impact. Of the uh one story garage, the left side is looking uh at the one story. Living room addition beyond and then the, we're we're doing a simple shed room uh for the covered porch.
So that's the outside wall of covered porch? Uh that's through to the side of the den.
Yes, that's a good way of looking at it, and that's all over.
So that side's a little stark too, uh how much of that are you gonna see from hands? You gonna see all that?
I I think realistically after this, probably not much, I mean.
Like uh bushes covering it, so you really only see it when you walk in the house.
I I mean, I think when it came to same approach of adding a window or two, I just found in general, I think your guys.
Could just do the same window here, cause it is like.
I know, and Alan was gonna say, there's a lot of people, I'm starting to hear pushback on adding any windows in the garage or security. Or whatever that's worth, but if you guys, if if you're okay with that, adding a window or two along here. We lose some utility on the wall space, but it's probably worth, it's probably worth adding at least a window, I don't know if that's.
No, I I actually think it would help a lot, I I have a series of windows in my garage and it's nice because it's lit, but and then from the street, it looks like part of the house, it looks. It looks nice.
Two window, three windows actually, and it's a tremendous help, does the light.
But I feel like, I feel like the 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 window design on that side could could be improved a little bit as well, just to make it a little bit more.
I think once you get back to here, I think at that point, it's not much impact from the street, plus it's bumped out a little bit. The other thing to keep in note, um I I'm not saying it's a big difference, the only reason we didn't add another window there. Was first, it it kinda made sense that probably a TV wall, but also that's some of the clay tile we're leaving. Um but I don't think that's gonna impact anything from the roof, but I do agree, I think that would go a long way to help.
So I just so you know, it's because that's an addition, you can frame it in, it's gotta dig deal into the tile wall, I I can understand that. So you're really working with the existing window that you have on that first floor then?
Yes, yeah, that's where that can come from, but I would think, I would think maybe add two windows along there, it's gonna match that. And I agree. You take security, it's a dumb issue.
We shouldn't be jumping around a bit, what do we, what do we like, like land on with the driveway and the.
So we're not landing, which I think the problem that we have is we don't know whether or not a dry well is gonna work. I think that we're struggling with the trade off on the aesthetics, if we did something with it at all. And I think without knowing whether or not they can drop any water into the ground, it's a struggle to know whether or not. The the higher percentage in lock cover just is material enough to to wanna try and tweak it.
I propose that it's double option.
I know the double options don't practically know that works.
Yeah, so so Frank proposed, and and I think this would allow us to get through it tonight, to the extent that you don't feel strongly about single side elevation again. Which I actually think I might take, but if you went directly in, you narrow the width of the driveway to the outside of the garage doors. And for that matter, there seem to be a little, the space in between them seems a little wider than you'd be.
We we could narrow that, I I think we can take that down.
Without the door open, you you added eighteen inches, can't you?
Yeah, I think, I don't like to go too narrow for a length of the tree, I've got it at about thirty, um. If we did go narrow, would narrow the driveway a little bit as well. I think normally, once the trim goes in, so if we did two feet, the trim is gonna be four or six inches on each side. That's where if you go to eighteen, also you get like a little strip aside, so I'm thinking two feet leaves.
You're nine and nine plus two?
What's that?
You're nine and nine plus two?
Yeah, so that'd be twenty, and then normally, you could do the driveway right up to the edge, but normally it looks a little funky. But I think in this case, given.
What'd you propose, twenty, twenty two?
Twenty two.
So you got a foot on either side? And that's all you have right now, it's only two feet in between those two doors?
Light fixture in between the two, right now, it is. Three feet right now, and what I was saying, we could go, I think we could go down the two and still leave enough siding without it looking flimsy. And I I that would probably look better, quite frankly, than you show.
Okay, so so Frank's proposal is that we do an A and a B, right? So we do, it's straight in, kind of what you need to make this bump in. And I assume that would be conditioned on there being no ability to drop in water into a dry well. And that to the extent that there's the ability to drop the dry well, what would alternative B look like? What, either the turnaround or the full parking or people don't feel strongly?
If if you can drop a dry well, I'm more inclined to say use with, get the third space. On the side, which is using that. No, plus, plus, okay.
Strip over it, and I would actually be, I would actually be okay with that too, I but I think it's gotta be. We need to, it's not like an option, do we wanna go dry well, do we not, it's, you try to go dry well, if it doesn't work, then.
Can it not, can you have the third space and have it curve in just a little bit?
And not go across the house?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think you're gonna need that. Four cars, I have, I have three kids and now the drivers, plus my husband and myself, so I know that it happens and. It would be really hard to manage. Any, at at least, you know, if you could park a car there, number two, and then in the driveway, but. I would hate to see having none of those.
Remember, the plan is to be able to use the garage though. I haven't ever been able to use. But that's the plan.
They actually do wanna use their garage, which I I see the way you see it though.
So in reality, you've got parking in practicality, you're parking four cars there with the side, because you're gonna park toward the drive.
So is everybody comfortable with the idea of tree replacement versus tree preservation? You know, it's. Well, you know, there's a, there's a, would you, if the tree has to go, would you be willing to put a tree in the northeast corner of the lot? Which basically would serve the same.
Not be closer to the street.
There there currently is actually, there's a tree right here and a tree right here.
Yeah, to to the uh, see where the P O B is on the uh. As you face the house on the left. Northeast corner. Uh would you be willing to put a tree there? Cause I don't think there is one there now, is there?
But we we talked about right here. There currently, there currently is one.
I think if they.
We're more happy to put another one up, um but.
That tree looks like it's gonna require a permit, and if you get a permit, if I remove the tree, you're gonna have to replace it.
We're we're more than happy to put up as many trees required.
So what do you have across the front? And we talked about something being dead and something being, I thought we talked about three removals. Smaller and bigger.
Yeah, there's a tree right here that's dead and there's a tree right here that is alive.
What's currently at the street?
Uh there's one, uh one right here and then this one, and then there's one uh right here. That's on our neighbor, it's our neighbor's property tree, so it's it's right up to the property line.
There's two ornamentals, the dead ones on the right, this is the one that was discussed that is hacked up, and and I agree in general. We probably would be doing a little bit gymnastics work around it and the odds are, good chance that it's gonna decline over time anyway, despite.
Then I'm I'm okay with it. I mean, but so there's two trees that are gonna go, one, one is the Japanese maple that's directly in front of my house. And the other is the big tree that uh is just. House, housed for, towards the house uh on the side of that cutout.
Yeah, and 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 the other thing to get, uh Mr. Rizzo was uh report with us and any other trees. There is, again, we don't have a vegetation survey, there is two trees here. Uh one, I I think we we believe is most certainly gonna have to go right along here. And there's another one that's questionable, one I believe is a holly, former area's tall, uh. If you look on page seven of uh C M E report, you kinda start to see on the left side.
Are there any in the backyard or just? In general, are there trees? Yeah, I think there's also a prohibition against taking more, taking down more than twenty five percent of the trees on the lot. So if you've, if you've only got two, four, six trees.
The entire lot is like, there are probably at least like ten.
In in your, in your yard though, not in, not on the property line or in the in the neighbor's yard or anything.
I will suspect regardless whether they're required or not, I I can imagine you guys are probably gonna replant. Not not control, but probably a couple of trees along there.
So does, fair to say that it feels like you've got room for two shade trees in front? Yeah, well, a assuming you're taking out the one that's by the driveway and whatever else you're clearing, is two, two too many?
A shade tree, I would think maybe one in this corner, given the two that are existing. I mean, maybe if you crowded, I think that might be a little crowded, but I can see one maybe on this corner.
Well, Al, I mean, if you don't, if you don't end up going with a layered out driveway, you can put one to the left of the house too, it'd be a nice.
Yeah, I mean, is the tree.
It'll give some privacy to the house too.
Is the tree on the northeast corner of your property, on the neighbor's property or is it on your property?
That's on ours.
Yeah, so he's northeast, the one that's on their lot line.
But you've got nothing to the right of the driveway, right?
Nothing to the right of the driveway, correct.
Isn't that a good place for a tree, or is it not? Isn't that a good place for a tree, or is it not a good?
My personal preference, I think if you have a, a shade tree more in the center of the lot, it tends to look like on these type of lots, it looks misplaced. I think more of an ornamental would work, if anything, better in that zone.
So one, we're, we're down from two to one? You got room for one? You're going to have to remove the two in the front, when the covered porch comes out.
Two, two ornamentals in the front.
Those have to go.
Big tree here, so it'd be three, one of which is dead, but it's called three. Uh, I think if there's no driveway turnoff here, if these, if we're saying if the soil, uh, tests shows. Percolating, percolating is not gonna work, I think we could certainly add one that probably be a good addition here. And I, so I think that's a potential, depending where that goes. I could see one in, in this zone that would also give them screening from the driveway right there. I think that'd be the one definite spot, this would be a potential, depending if they ended up doing the, um. Uh, system in the soil to prevent. Then back here, I think if we wanna be safe, we'd say both of them go. One of the trees doesn't seem very valuable, it's kind of scrappy. One is a holly, which I think has more value, but I would say those two we go. But I think we gotta certainly replace those.
Yeah. It's in the requirement anyway, but we need to make a condition of any approval that they'll seat the, uh, the burrows tree.
Yeah. Feel like there's a lot of if this, then that's.
I think if, if I'm understanding, like the main thick is gonna be.
So if we, if we got the oil, if we got rid of that turnoff and just did the proposed straight, does that resolve? The, like regardless, does that resolve, I mean?
I think for me, that would resolve the fact to have a drywall, we'd obviously prefer it, but I think that gets you pretty close to the twenty-five percent.
So everyone knows the, the coverage with the driveway isn't total lock coverage, it's, it's strictly.
Where is the term lock coverage relative to the standard?
Or, uh, forty-five percent permitted, or forty point six, so a little under forty-one.
And this should make them out, too.
We left it on there, just, but they.
Forty point six is with the flare of the driveway, though, so if that comes down, it, it goes even further, right?
Yeah, I think if we totally took that off, just not, not just the side portion, that was about two percent. Figured that come down roughly three percent, so thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent.
I'm struggling with the fact that, that that driveway is that tight to the twenty-five percent of the front yard.
It's crazy.
It doesn't.
I've run on, I've run into some, there's a few other jobs where. Gymnastics to make it work, even on a hundred foot lot.
Yeah, it's two, put a two car garage on a seventy-five, and it's really, it's really set up for a lot.
Yeah.
Um, and, and.
And house in the middle of the lot, too.
Are you proposing keeping the third parking spot?
I think what we're, I think what we're saying to avoid the ifs possibilities that, that's probably comfortable for people is just. Just do a double wide driveway, lining up to one foot on either side of the garage doors, which would be a total of twenty-two wide. Nix the third parking space, but I think that would trigger, that would trigger a parking variance, because one, providing. I, I think, I don't know what you guys thoughts, but so far the conversation was the driveway would help kind of the board. With expanding the driveway, but if we weren't gonna do the drywall, drywall, we'd certainly have to narrow this up. Um, I don't know if, if you still want us to look at doing the driveway.
I'm sorry, Marley. Just was, I wasn't sure where the drywall landed, that they just went back to.
I think what we're saying is that we nixed all this paving and just simply. Two separate garage doors, that then the drywall would be necessary.
Well, Mr. Shisai, can you, can you kind of summarize the, what we've kind of agreed with here, and the proposed changes? We've come up with, so that we're all in the same page.
So my understanding, we'll start with the act here, the drive up driveway and the trees, is we would do a twenty-two foot. Driveway, which would be the two nine foot doors with a two foot gap between and a one foot overlap on each side. And we would run that straight out to the street. We will bump this into the seven foot minimum. Uh, that's the one story rear addition. The covered porch would stay as is, but we will add a eyebrow roof detail. Going across the count to break up that facade. Uh, sorry, uh, you know, I'll finish with the architecture, and then we'll see the trees. And then what we would do is add two small bedroom windows, like, uh, not egress sized windows, but like standing size. Uh, along the right side facade in one bedroom, would add two similar or small. Windows in the garage door on the left, sorry, garage, uh, on the left side. Think that was it for the architectural. And as far as trees go, uh, we'll need whatever the ordinance requirement is, it, you know, let's assume when we remove the two, it's in the back. And that may trigger, and then in the front, since we're basically saying we're gonna nix this part of the driveway, we would add two shade trees. Roughly in these locations, given the existing shade trees that are gonna stay. I think that covered.
And so I just wanna make sure, you, you don't wanna try to push for the third parking space in the extra driveway by pursuing the drywall first.
I think if we get comfort from the board that they're good to go with this, I think we would be happy to do it.
So I think, I think we're actually moving towards getting comfortable proceeding tonight. I don't think it is too complicated to offer up the primary plan. Of proceeding with the driveway as you originally proposed it, subject to you being able to comply with the drywall requirements. And that if that does not work, falling back to the twenty-two foot straight, which would then permit the tree on that side. I, it's a touch complicated. I, I, I think in the end, you're better served if you get the parking. I think your neighborhood's better served if you get a drywall. But I think as a practical matter, the scaling it back to the twenty-two straight, deviation from the ordinances. We, we've struggled with how, how else to do it. There's no further reduction that's appropriate, and I think that, I think that that would work. I don't wanna push you to do that, if after all this discussion, like, too complicated, just keep it simple. But, but if you wanna do it, then I would propose that the board approve of that.
Given the option first, to try the drywall, keep your third parking space.
I think that's, I agree after hearing everything else, I think the tile was pretty, not too complicated, and the one other thing would be if. If the driveway did extend, if the drywall does turn out to work. Would that, would that nix the obligation to do a second shade tree in the front lot? That mean the only other?
I don't see where else you could put it, because you said you have one in the front left, you don't like it to the right of the driveway.
Yeah.
And then you'd be, you'd use the other.
You, you may have to put it somewhere on property.
Anyway.
Because of the, the chasing ordinance.
I, I think everybody would like to believe you're gonna landscape the back in a nice way, but we don't wanna do it for you.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know what the new wording says yet.
No, I don't think it's.
Is, um. The drywall, assuming it's something that makes sense, right, where we'll have a soilborne done, uh, we'll have an engineer look at it to see what, what that would do. Do you guys care what water it's capturing?
We do.
It gotta be the driveway.
So, so, no, it can't be the driveway. It's gotta be roof leaders. What you should do is you should draw everything that's feasible to be drawn in that direction. And it's gonna go in the backyard, that's the place it's gonna work, and you should run leaders that are feasible to that new drywall. But if you find that you've limited capacity, then it would be what, you know, what?
Is, is there a, uh, and again, I'm not trying to complicate, but I think what, i- if it turns out that it can work, I have a feeling that the next question an engineer would ask is. How much are we capturing, if it works? Is there, I don't know, different metric?
Yeah, it's an entirely fair question.
Um, I'll, I can work with the engineers. It's, it's basically just a calculation off the square footage of the roof.
Okay.
But, but the question, Jordan, is whether or not there's a threshold in order to get them, yeah?
The entire roof, or is it? Is it like, is it relative, okay, the entire?
Well, wait, whoa, whoa, I'm not a gutter guy, but you can't do that. Um, we're only gonna be able to take the stuff that's gonna pitch in that direction, you're not gonna.
Run it underground, too, or you could also do two smaller. It's got, in my, underground with my house, the front runs around the house. And luckily, we had an old, uh, septic tank that we fill with gravel, and we use that as a drywall. Um, so, you know, it is, I think it's more of a question of what's gonna be, what the ground can handle, if there is an issue with it. It might be you can only handle half the roof, maybe it's gonna handle a whole, a whole roof, but I think that's, that's not me, that's an engineer.
Yeah, I, I think we can leave, I think we can leave that to George to describe. And, and for that matter, if, if there isn't, if it's not practically gonna do it, if Jordan is just gonna tell you it's.
I, I think you can either do it or you can't. I don't think it's a matter of half roof, whole roof, I think you just do a whole roof.
You're saying, if you're gonna do many senses, okay, roof, capacity, why, maybe we'll just strip them down, as opposed to one.
You know, one big drywall, two smaller ones.
But either it's gonna perk or it's not, right? That's part of what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, and by the time you, if you're doing it underground, you're dropping it down, and you're just, you're trying to, you're trying to, if you can see. And everything can be torn up anyway.
Yes, okay. So I think then the, the only toggle is really, if, if, if the perk system works, then we would have to pull off.
Yeah.
The, the parking space.
Oh, the whole thing, okay, yes. Focus to the initial, yeah, I got, so as proposed.
Yep. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, as proposed, except for you're still bringing in to seven feet, the side yard.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And the changes to the, to the both, both, both side elevations, we talked about the windows on both sides. Talked about dropping the side back, we talked about getting the roof detail across, split the first and second floor, tying it to the front porch. Um, we talked about option A, option B, and then that affects the treaty. That's my motion. Uh, we gotta.
Mr. Chair, I had some.
Sure, um, the rear first, uh, one story addition, when you're shifting that in, you're maintaining the same square footage, correct?
Uh, yes.
And then so where are you eliminating your?
Well, what we, what we'll probably do is take it out of, take the deck. And that, so building the coverage, as I was saying, the lock will slightly reduce. But basically, this is a slide over, or we'll use a sliver of lock coverage, building coverage to the same.
No, it should be neutral. It is neutral.
Yeah.
Building coverage would stay the same, but then we would likely.
Patio, it's gonna go over, yeah. Okay, yeah, you're right, take it out of patio on that.
You're underneath on lock coverage, Jenny.
And then the second part is. The variance that you're seeing. We're gonna go with the larger number thirty-seven point five percent of the driveway.
Yeah.
Might be smaller, but we'll see them most.
And, and if it, if it doesn't perk and you cut off that space, then you're. Saying a waiver variance for the.
Waiver is hard, twenty-two straight up.
We only have two spaces.
Right. Yeah, if it doesn't perk, and you, it's option B.
Yeah.
Then you, you get a waiver for that.
Yeah.
But we're being optimistic. If you pump the water out of this process, I'm not an optimist.
And so, so with the experience that we have of running through these things, not only on our own houses, but with those people. You will benefit greatly if you're able to get some of your water. If the backyard's gonna be more usable, you're gonna wind up with less flooding conditions. It is definitely your benefit to wind up getting that. The driveway is a perk that you get as well. But I, I just wanna, just wanna make sure, you know, from, from our experience, it'll definitely benefit your ability to use your.
Yes.
And they're not that, they're not that expected, either way.
What?
She's seconding the motion.
Who made the motion?
We had to open it to public. I'm still, I'm still blah, blah, blah.
Is there any number in the public that has any questions or comments with regard to the application? Let the record reflect on it. Okay, did you guys have anything further?
You know a drywall, drywall guy.
All right, um, okay, so discussion. Anybody have anything further?
No, I don't know.
I, I'm gonna try and make the motion. I made the motion to approve the Levine application. Um, the approval will be conditioned on the accuracy of the record and plans submitted. Um, the approval is gonna be conditioned this fall. The side yard variance is being granted, subject to the following conditions. I'm gonna tie in the, um, the garage. There's gonna be, uh, two new windows added, um, to the southerly elevation inside of the garage, two new windows. On the northerly elevation, the, um, the approval is for the, effectively the main house, right? And the, um, porch, the front porch, to deviate from the side yard setback. The rear addition is gonna be bumped in to conform, so it's gonna be, um, there's no variance granted for that. So you can do it at seven, you could do it a touch more if you wanted to round it off, whatever it is. And that is conditioned on the addition. Show me the elevation, please, quickly, Al. I think it's two, two windows on the second floor. How did you describe the, the strip?
I would call it an eyebrow roof, shed roof.
Eyebrow roof, shed roof, which is gonna be, um, uh, constructed to aesthetically, um. You, you carry, carry that front porch line back and break up the facade.
And complying with the projection.
Complying with the projection mutation, you can do it a little bit.
Two feet past five point, so it would go further than the two feet from seven, normally.
You have two feet to work with. Whatever that number is, you can work with.
Five point nine minus two.
I mean, you're not gonna show it on your site. You're just gonna show it.
Um, okay, so that gets through the, the, the side yard setback variance. Second piece of it is the, uh, front driveway variance. And so that is, um, subject, I, I'm proposing to approve it, subject to, um, to Plan A. Exactly as designed and shown on the plans, subject to, um. Data being produced to the board's engineer, showing that there is the, um.
It has an infiltration instance, it's not worth it.
Ooh, you hear those words now? Subject to the feasibility of a drywall construction, which would permit all roof leaders. Uh, to drain into the new drywall. In which event, as, as proposed, in the event that's not feasible. Then the alternative Plan B would be a twenty-two foot wide driveway. Centered on the, um, garage as designed, running straight to the street. And then that would also come with a shade tree requirement to the left of the driveway, where the parking was. And the last bit is that in the event that the, in the event that either of those scenarios works, there's one last requirement for the shade tree. We placed, um, on the northerly side front, you know, where I was shown right there.
That's either option.
E- e- either way, that doesn't. You have the, the, if, if option two, then we waiver the parking. And, and waiver the parking if option two is twenty-two. Anything else?
When, when we resubmit the resolution compliance, I don't think we'll have the engineer and still warned up by then. I'll just not put this on, I'll write it in a way that shows that option.
Ultimately, you'll need that.
Eventually.
Before you get a resolution.
I'm sorry, so for, for, whenever, whenever you would be voting on the resolution next month's meeting, whatever, sometime. I, I don't have to have that resolved at that point, but I'll show it as, I'll, I'll put some sort of language and graphic.
Can you get an elevation by that?
Yes, yeah, everything else, and I'm just thinking that, I'll, I'll, I'll write that and show. Somehow indicate the tree and.
There you go.
This portion.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Do we need that for the resolution now?
No, but I'll. For resolution compliance?
The memorialization of the resolution.
No, we don't. No, you can, you can, we can draft it as, we can draft the conditions, and we can draft option one, option two, subject to information received. From the applicant, and your analysis as to feasibility.
Yeah, so, so you don't need that for.
We'll, we'll, we'll resubmit anyway, just so you guys can see it, I think.
Difficulty is, you're gonna have to have, once resolved, between whatever conditions we have. And you getting approvals, you're gonna have to have it done, because they're not gonna know which options they're gonna be approving, and to affect your drawings, your permits.
Can the resolution be passed with that toggle?
Their, their resolution can be passed, but.
Hold on, you're talking about construction permits to build the house, it needs shed driveway. Leave the driveway off to the side, it's covered in resolution, you do it, you do it later, you do it, right?
No, for, for. I would want this to be. I would want this to be resolved, then.
You'd want the dry well.
Yeah, you're not changing the size, they're.
Yeah. So, so when's resolution compliance happen in timing after we adopted the resolution?
As soon as they want, I guess they have a year.
You have plenty of time, then, you've got forty-five days to publish.
I would more just worry about getting soil born, and an engineer will get it through June.
But Jordan's right, you're gonna have a year.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about submitting for resolution on your guys' end.
I don't know how we made such a simple matter so.
But I'll second the, uh, thoughts of the.
All right, I got a motion, I got a second. Thank you. Please understand that we sincerely care, not only about how this gets developed and how it looks, but about all the neighbors. And if we all drive around and we all enjoy how great town is, at least some of it is because of spending this time, so we thank you for spending with us.
You're staying so late, too.
All right, that's it for business. Small administrative items, um, one, uh, minutes from April eleventh, I have looked it over, I have no. Uh, changes to suggest, so I will make a motion to approve it, it's from April eleventh meeting.
I'll second it.
Yes. 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 Uh, the resolution sticks itself.
I haven't, I haven't looked at it, I'm, I'm trying to, if you guys leave.
Did you look at it? Did, did we get?
I, we did, and we got what I was looking for.
Okay, okay, good.
Doug and I discussed it prior.
Then I will make a motion to approve the resolution six is processed.
Second.
Yes. 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 Uh, I'm gonna abstain, because I abstain for the vote. Public comment, anyone in the public, uh, wish to make, uh, comments, suggestions, how much, great, how great we are? Thank you, everyone. Two down, two down.